I am. Okay, we are on. Let me just see if.
What's that?
And the list is increasing as we go here, doesn't look like it. Starting to. Yeah, attendee list is increasing, so I'm going to give it a minute to. Attendees to to show up.
I will be back in a minute.
Now we're going to wait for Jean to come back. In fact, the first.
I apologize, but while Jean comes back so that I don't have to do it, I'm just going to grab my water cup that I left over there. I'll be right back.
Okay.
I guess that means it's not Miller time yet.
Oh, not yet. I think we have all the attendees. We're going to be here for the first. First meeting, but now we're missing Natasha and Lee and Alex. We need his back.
I think I think Jean is muted, you know.
Jean, you're muted.
It's just as well.
Natasha's back, waiting for Alex.
Oh, I haven't found anywhere. I'm here.
Okay, very good. Then. Good evening and welcome. I am Paul Alpert, the planning board chair. This is an open meeting of the Needham Planning Board. They is Monday, March 28.
Of course.
And it is 7:05 PM. Meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment, except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda. And we are chock full of hearings tonight. We have. Four. Planning Board hearings. And then a statutory hearing on a bylaw amendment. That will be before town meeting. So the four planning board. Meetings are the four planning board hearings are first. The matter of Needham Gateway LLC property located at 100 and 120 Highland Avenue. Regarding the installation and use of an additional dumpster enclosure. And then we have a hearing. For Latin A Group LLC doing business as Latina Kitchen. The property located at 30 Dedham Avenue regarding a permit for outdoor seating for the season. Then we have a a hearing. For Dorit Travel Sanchez Luz, manager of Eat Farmhouse LLC. With regard to again, or similarly, a. Request to permit outdoor seating by the farmhouse restaurant in Needham Center for the season. And a a hearing on a request by the town of Needham to amend. The special permit for the. Municipal Chapel Street parking lot, which would allow restaurants. That order the parking lot to have outdoor seating in the parking lot. Then we do, then we have, as I mentioned. A public hearing. On a warrant article to amend the zoning bylaw with regard to brew pubs and micro brewery. As permissible uses in town. Those are the public hearings for which we will be allowing public comment. We will now confirm that we have a quorum of the members of the planning board present. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. After we determine that a quorum is present, we will introduce the planning department staff. So. Members of the planning board, Adam Block.
President.
Marty Jacobs.
President.
Natasha Espada.
Present.
And Jean McKnight.
Present.
We have all five of us here and. Planning Director Lee Newman.
Present.
And our Assistant Planning Director Alexandra. Okay, ground rules. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. The speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. For each person from the public who is recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record before speaking. That concludes our introductory remarks. It is now 7:09 PM. I am calling the public hearing that was scheduled for 7:00 PM. With regard to an amendment to major project site plan, special permit number 2005 dash oh seven. Needham Gateway LLC, the petitioner for property located at 10120 Highland Avenue. Regarding the request for the installation and use of an additional dumpster enclosure. With use with up to three additional trash dumpsters within the enclosure. For cardboard only to be located within the parking lot. This is a continuation of a hearing from March 15. And I see that we have been joined by the petitioner, the manager of the petitioner, Mike Moskowitz. And his counsel, Rick Mann. So. Rick, if you would bring us up to date, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, is Wayne Keefno joining us as well? Alex is on.
Uh, sorry, tell me the name I'm looking for, Wayne. Yes, yeah, didn't realize, sure thing.
So good evening, members of the members of the board. My name is Rick Mann. I'm the attorney for Needham Gateway LLC. With me this morning is this evening, excuse me, is Mike Moskowitz. It's been a long day. And Wayne Kiefner, who is with the BSC Group, the parking engineer, who prepared the parking evaluation. Before we I begin, I just want to again apologize for yet another unfortunate incident that occurred last week. On Monday, March 3rd, 21, Mr. Moskowitz discovered that a dumpster was again placed along the residential property of budding line. Contrary to the express instructions that he had given all of the tenants. It took until Tuesday to confirm who actually was responsible for that particular dumpster. It turned out again to be Omaha Steaks. It happened as a result of the tenant not realizing that a a new dumpster was being brought in. They thought they were simply going to take the filled dumpster out. But apparently the contractor who was not not in the line of communication placed that dumpster on the budding line. It took two or three days before we could finally get them to remove it. And again, we apologize to the neighborhood. We're hoping that by instituting a online access to the existing cameras and adding. Three additional cameras within the parking lot that situations like this can be avoided in the future. We also, at at the last meeting, we we spoke about a number of things, one of which was providing some sort of a. Submission of some details relative to the dumpster enclosure itself. And the dumpsters within in order to make sure that those were going to be accessible. And also to determine exactly how the contractors would come in and out of the site. To dispose of the cardboard materials within those dumpsters. As a result of that. We we submitted a plan last week, which I presume the members of the board have now received. Which I'm going to ask Mr. Musk was to put on the screen, beginning with the site plan showing the location of the dumpsters once again. Of this plan, if you do, yeah, exactly. So we can see at the bottom of the plan in yellow is the location, which is the same location as at the last hearing. Up in the right hand corner is the existing dumpster enclosure that is not being utilized. But is going to be in part remaining and removed. I'm going to let Mr. Moskowitz walk you through those two elements of the existing enclosure. So there's no mistake about what's staying and what's leaving.
So the piece of fence that's staying is the red line and it runs from the property line to the corner of the building. And then the two fence structures that are the blue line make the the corral and those sections will be removed.
In addition, at the last meeting. It was asked that we provide some sort of a narrative relative to exactly how the contractors would get in and out. Off the Second Avenue to make their. Both the picking up and disposal of the cardboard. And again, Mike prepared a plan and a narrative for that. If you could put that on, Mike.
Well, the 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 plan of of how the truck is is going to come is actually on this drawing, so that. The the truck will come in from second half. And pretty much put the back of the truck between spots two, two and three. They're they're just labeled so we can reference it. The truck is. About 25 feet long and nine and a half feet wide. So the the dumpster, the new, the new corral here of approved would have a door at this end and the door would swing. Towards second half, the dumpsters would roll out. They get attached to the truck via cable. They're lifted up and dumped in. But they don't, this particular truck does not make a lot as much noise. As the truck that picks up the main dumpster. It'll probably be there for 10, 12 minutes and then. Put the dumpsters back in the corral and move on. And I have a drawing of the dumpster corral showing. Just get it on the screen. So this is the drawing of of the corral. This is the curb. Towards second half. This is the curb toward the abutting commercial property. And over here is a the next parking space. So the dumpsters are 80 inches by 40 inches. All three dumpsters are the same size. They've been placed in here with approximately 32 inches between them and 65 inches between these two dumpsters, leaving plenty of room for maneuver.
Mike, is it the same contractor who picks up this dumpster as will pick up the. The trash dumpster that's in the middle of the parking lot?
Yes, it's one contractor, two different style trucks.
And do you know whether they would be coordinating the timing of when the two trucks would be coming?
No, well, the the truck for the main for the main dumpster in the middle of the parking lot, because we have parking spaces there. That are, there's a sign there says do not park before 10 AM. So the main dumpster truck comes between, I believe, 8:30 and 10. And the cardboard dumpster truck comes. Sometime during the day.
Could be anytime. 30 and 10, or it could be later.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So because. Because the parking space will be eliminated. We asked the SC group to revise their evaluation. Just to confirm that with the reduction of that one space, there was not going to be any change in the conclusion. Relative to the adequacy of the current parking capacity. Wayne Keefner is here again this evening. To answer any questions you may have relative to that report, which was provided earlier in the week to the members of the board. In the interest of your full schedule, Mr. Chair, I will stop talking at this point and ask if there are any questions.
Yes, Adam.
Thanks. Thanks, Paul. So I I do have, I think, a couple of comments or questions. Why not have? Mike, the door. That would open up into space one.
Let me, let me just pull that back up.
Do you want me to, Mr. Chair, do you want me to share my screen?
Sure.
Somebody needs to share a screen to show us.
I can do it. There you go. Okay. So what's your question, Adam?
So right now you have this set up. So this door. Opens up like this.
Right.
And it seems to me that you have. You have, you have a little bit of room, but it it definitely makes and cars come in and they. You know, via right to get in and through. It seems to me that that become, that can become a bit of a. You know, couldn't invite some problems. So I would instead expect that the door would be here.
But Adam, what if there's a car parked there at the time that the that the truck comes?
Well, then they that that doesn't.
We don't know when the truck is coming. There's no set time for this truck.
There could be a sign here. I mean, that's true. That's but so Paul, you raise a very good point. Which I, but I thought that we had discussed before at our last hearing. That to avoid a traffic problem. That the truck was going to come in here, back up and pull in the trash from here. That's what I remember we spoke about.
Right?
So it's true that it does present another challenge, Mr. Jared, that. That if there is a car here, they'd have to create some additional signage. But if there's a car here, here, or here. You know, the truck can't get in there anyways. The truck is going to have.
The truck, the truck is not getting into the parking spaces. The truck is blocking the parking spaces.
No, what they said is they were, oh, I thought you said that this the. Did I misunderstand that, Mike? Are you saying that the cars that the. That the cars can actually remain in these spots and the dumpster and the dump truck is going to be here in front of the parking spot?
Yes. So can you see my cursor or not?
I can, but.
Okay, so the back, right, the 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 truck is going to be. Let's see, parallel to the property line, okay, outside of those parking spaces.
We're here.
The truck is nine and a half feet wide, the distance approximately from the island to the top of the painted line. I think it's 25 feet. So there's enough room for the cars to go around. Previously, the truck loaded in front of FW web. So it, yeah, except the 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 beginning of the blue line will be between line. Move it to the right a little more to the line between two and three. Little more to the right. Yeah, perfect. Stop. Okay, so so the door, first of all, would it swings flat to the fence. Okay, and it'll be secured while it's open with some kind of attachment, so the wind doesn't blow it. So the door is going to be flat here. And don't forget, the traffic is going a little bit, you know, to the left. So to speak, but there's no way that, you know, I I can leave. All these spots open, waiting for the truck to come. They could come at 2:00, 3:00 in the afternoon.
I understand.
So I I.
That gate should not be blocking any traffic because of what you just said. It's going to be flat to the fence.
Right, it's going to lay flat against the fence. If I show you a picture of the existing corral, you'll you'll see the fence.
Okay, I think that. That answers my question. Thank you for that.
Adam, I think there's another aspect. Can you go back to your shared plan there?
Sure.
That we didn't really talk about, but I'm I'm thinking if you look at the dumpster enclosure drawing down below.
This?
Yeah, the way I'm reading this, when I'm looking at the door end, where's the hinge for the door?
No, the door is on the side there. That's right. There's the door.
That's the door and it opens and it won't go, shouldn't go beyond this point, the.
Sorry.
No, it's going to go flat.
It'll go flat against it.
So you have a 180 hinge that goes flat against it?
Yes.
Okay, so it won't extend beyond the side of the of the enclosure that's closest to the street, right?
It will not extend in into the parking lot. And then block traffic.
Okay, I think that wasn't clear, Adam. Do you see that now?
I do now, yes.
If you worried about the door blocking traffic, I don't see that that's going to happen.
Because it's up here. This door will swing open and it's that size of door is not beyond the flow of traffic.
But it's going to go flat to the end of the enclosure anyway.
The door is here. I'm drawing and the door is here. It will open like this so that it'll be there. Right, that's the hinge.
Exactly right. That's right.
Thank you for that, Natasha. That's helpful. I will, I will say. I mean, I I talked about my frustration at the last hearing about the dumpster. And having it right up against the residential neighborhood, which you assured us would not happen once. And yet it's happened a second time. And I know you've talked about having. You know, visual inspection by by a video camera. That clearly is insufficient because management doesn't have the capacity to manage it properly. It seems to me the only way to solve the problem is for the landlord to have someone physically present. When the dumpster is scheduled. It's just very, it's very unfair for the residents, I think.
Um, yes, Jean, I think you had your hand up first.
Yes, I want to point something out regarding the flow of traffic. It maybe it will alleviate some concerns, although maybe everybody already understands it. As the traffic enters the site off. Second Avenue. It doesn't necessarily have to go straight ahead, paralleling the property line that's to the rear of the new dumpster. If you can go in and take an immediate left, you can go in, I mean, an immediate sharp left, you can go in and take. An immediate left. Then, you know, avoiding whatever might be parked in front of 1, 2, 3, 4. So there's a lot of ways to circulate around this parking lot. I think all of the reason I'm saying that is that any concern that cars will back up on Second Avenue because they're trying to enter the property, but the. Dumpster, you know, the the trash removal truck will be in their way. I I just don't see that would happen where there's so many different ways to get around the parking lot.
We have had a couple of communications. From the neighborhood air. Group. Requesting that the dumpster be placed next to the existing trash dumpster. And. It just, it just seems to me that that having this dumpster at that location will just create even more. Traffic and parking. Problems when the truck is there to empty that. That dumpster, I think. It seems to me it will that that especially where this truck could could be coming later, later in the day. I I think this site makes a lot more sense to avoid traffic within the parking lot. Problems when the when when the truck is there. To to empty the cardboard. I also think that that these spaces that are way in the back of the parking lot are really only going to be used. When the rest of the parking lot is full, because this is the furthest area away from the. From the tenants. People are going to park a lot, a lot closer if there are spaces. So. It's much more likely that those spaces will actually be vacant. Most of the day or or when the truck. When the truck comes, just just my thoughts to answer. That concern that some of the neighbors had. Natasha, you're 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 next.
Thanks. That was my my question was, first of all, thank you for getting us all this information. You provided a lot of clarity in the plan, so I really appreciate that. I have two questions. The first one is. And I'm just gonna, can I share my screen?
Please go.
Okay, is there, I'm concerned about the, like Jean said, the backup of traffic, because if, especially if we don't know what time of the day and I saw all, you know, that noon time was the peak hour and and there's morning hour also. But my question is, is there any reason why you're just not extending this dumpster and allowing for it to just be, you would still only lose one space, I believe. Is there any reason why it's not attached to this so that it gets it out of the entrance and exit?
Waiting for me to comment?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so first of all, we take two spaces there because the space closest to the dumpster. Is not a full space. It's, I mean, it's close to, but.
Okay.
That would take two spaces there. And it's also taking two spaces closer to the shopping center where people, you know, want to park. I I think, as has been pointed out by Paul, I believe. That those spaces in the back are are rarely used. I mean, they're only used when, again, the all the other spaces fill up, so. It's it's very probable that the truck won't even block. You know, too many parked cars. And again, it's only going to be there for 10 minutes or so. And even with the truck there, there's there's still plenty of maneuverability. And if the truck, if you want to put that back up, is, you know, now parallel to the entrance of the dumpster. It's, you know, this is a heavy, there's, there's people here, there's traffic here. And now that I'm pointing at the screen, but I realized it can't seem like thing. You know. The 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 truck's going to be backed up again. It's 25 feet long. I I I just think. On the opposite side in the corner, out of the way. I I can request an afternoon pickup. Like the the times that I've seen the truck there has usually been like after 1:00, 2:00 o'clock. But again, I'm not there every time it comes. So, but I can request that, you know, late, a mid afternoon pickup. Where A, there's less people, less cars in the in the lot and just less people around.
So that was my second question is, is there any way that the hours could be when it's not peak hours? If if it remains in the other location, which it sounds like there's, there's a good reason for it. You know, in the in the location that is currently proposed. So if there's a way of limiting it to hours that are not. You know, that that are not your peak hours, I think that would be important to be able to not be able to clog that front entrance piece. So those are my only two questions. Thank you. Go ahead.
I don't know, I say I can request that through the dispatch and if they can schedule that, but you know, I I don't want to commit to that because that's out of my control.
Right, but maybe we can, right, but maybe we can make sure that the hours are reasonable hours for the for the neighbors, because that was something that some of the neighbors complained about. Just within a large range, but that it's, you know. I didn't see that in the. In the information that was sent, but maybe it was in there. Thank you.
Well, we have a restriction not to pick up trash. I know before 8:30, I I don't know what the end limit is, but I can tell you they don't come in the evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question.
Sure, Adam, go ahead.
How tall do you intend the dumpster to be where the cardboard materials will be removed? The dumpster, I mean, the the fencing.
Six feet.
And what's the height of the existing dumpster enclosure?
Six feet, or I thought you were going to ask me the height of the the dumpster itself. I don't know. I can look it up. I have. No, it's, it's going to be the same height as the current dumpster corral.
Okay.
So they they will not be visible when you're standing in the parking lot.
I also just wanted to see what other mitigation can be done to ensure that any kind of recyclable.
I also just wanted to see what other mitigation can be done to ensure that any kind of recyclable materials, like, you know, small cardboard boxes, they can become, you know, projectiles landing in a neighbor's backyard, even though this is by the street, not by the residence. You know, if it's high enough, then it should hopefully prohibit. And especially if it's all the cardboard's broken down and it's inside the containers. The problem is that, as I've seen by my own visual inspection, not everything fits inside those, you know, those dumpster bins.
Okay, um, before we get to comments and questions from the, the attendees, um, and I do not see any, I see one hand raised. I just wanna briefly mention some correspondence that we received. We got an email from Elizabeth Caponia. This one's from Sunday. Stating that she thought that the more sensible place was to locate this next to the main dumpster, which we've discussed that issue. She states the alternative location proposed at the entrance of the parking lot will create issues with cars entering and exiting with possible backups onto Second Avenue. Which, which we've discussed and we've seen, we've seen the drawing of the plan. The board does not think that that will happen because of the current layout. She also requests that all demolition construction dumpsters be placed away from the property line of the residences. So we've, we've discussed that and adhere to the same hours of operation, so. Please be more diligent about that if you can. I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to accommodate the residents on this. Thought I had another email beyond that, but I'm not finding it. And then we got a letter very late today, or four thirty, from um John Negotian. Uh, he has his hand raised to speak. So I will let him, rather than, rather than reading his, his letter, which we actually did not have time to consider before this, this meeting and therefore is not part of the public record yet. I will let Mr., Mr. Negotian. Ah, I just found, I just found my other email from Elizabeth Caponia, second email showing a photo, oh, showing that there's plenty of space in her opinion to house the dumpster next to the existing dumpster. So um if there's nothing else from the planning board, I will call on Mr. Negotian. Welcome, Mr. Negotian. I hope that your uh computer, your computer connection is better than it was two weeks ago. You are muted, Mr. Negotian. I believe you need to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, hi there.
How you doing, Mr. Albert?
John Negotian, how are you this week?
Oh, well, let me tell you, it hasn't been easy. I mean, I wish I could have brought up all these issues in the prior meeting. We were uh, we had technical difficulties, unfortunately.
Yeah, Mr. Negotian, I'm gonna state, if I may please,
Go ahead.
that you raise a lot of issues in your letter. This application is with regard to the dumpsters. You raise issues about the snow plowing. Um, and I think there were other, there may have been other issues in your letter. Um, they're not before the board in terms of an amendment to the site plan special permit. If, if those issues are resulting in a violation of the current site plan special permit or if they're causing other problems, I would ask that you bring them to the attention of the building commissioner, Mr. David Roach. And so that he, hopefully, he can handle problems. And uh if he can't, then he can, he or you or whatever the process is, can come before the planning board at a, at another time. Hopefully, the snow plowing issue will not be a problem again until next November or December. But it is still, it is still early. We have gotten snowstorms in April and May. This is New England.
Well, let's keep our fingers crossed it doesn't happen. The reason I brought those, the snow plowing issues up is merely nothing more than, than if the dumpster was added on, instead of having dumpsters located all around the parking lot and they should be together and the, although the parking spot is just a little bit smaller by a foot or so, it works in the, and if they're blocking parking spots so that they can get to the dumpster already, then it, it pretty much works out, okay? I took the measurements, I have the measurements, okay? And that would leave, you know, nobody wants to call, nobody wants to call the um, the building inspector and complain. I complained because Mr. Moskowitz clearly stated to me, he was removing the dumpsters from the website and they never were, okay? And that's the only reason why I called the building inspector. Other than that, I wouldn't have, okay? Mr. Moskowitz claimed he would, he told me, no problem, we'll remove them. And, and that didn't happen, okay? And, but if the dumpsters stayed together, okay? And it's not the snow plowing that I'm complaining about, it's the snow removal. They start piling into a big, huge pile, there's a hundred and fifty yards of snow and then at midnight, they remove it. And it's easy to think that there's no residences there, but uh, let me just tell you. There's eleven families that directly abut it and the bedrooms are ten feet away, okay? There's forty residential families within a total of a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy-five feet from there. And when the machines are backing up, not during the snow plowing, this is the day or two after a snowstorm when they're removing the snow to get a hundred percent of all their parking lot. And, and that's what the complaint is. If the dumpster goes there, that's where, that's where we want the snow to go. So it would actually be a pretty, pretty uh well uh program, the, the snow can go on the other end where that this, you want the dumpster to go and the new dumpsters can go right next to the other dumpster, rather than having it spread out in the parking lot.
Well, I have a couple of reactions to that, Mr. Negotian.
Go ahead.
My first reaction is um, again, the snow, the snow plowing issue is not in front of us and so we haven't had a chance to look to see whether that's an issue that is covered by the existing site plan permit. And, and if it is, and if what's going on is a violation of that, of, of a provision that's in that permit, then the building inspector, the, the building commissioner will enforce the permit and take appropriate action. Uh, if it's not in the special permit, uh, which I would invite our building commissioner to look at when you get in touch with him on it. I think, I think that's a valid issue for somebody uh with the appropriate procedure to bring in front of us to get a condition into the special permit to limit the hours when that snow removal can take place. Because I think that if that snow removal is taking place at midnight, one, two o'clock in the morning, uh, I think that's a legitimate complaint and a legitimate concern and something should be done and we have between now, hopefully, we have between now and uh next, next meteorological winter, December first, to handle that.
Uh, excuse me, I beg to differ. I, I, I think that if we're gonna talking about the trash, whether it be the blowers blowing it over because they're not staying in the dumpsters, it, it all corresponds and becomes the same. It, it's the same thing like looking underneath the fence. We're, we're not talking about the, the fences, but yet the trash blows underneath the fence. There's a huge problem.
That, that, that was brought to our attention earlier at the hearing and I am, and I am concerned about that hole at the bottom, at the bottom of the fence. Um, I, I, I have a note in, in my decision uh where, where, where I reviewed the, the um, the draft decision that was sent to us uh to, to raise that point, to um, to, to put something in to, to have the fence fixed so that it is flush to the ground so that things cannot go, can, can, cannot go under the fence, so the dirt under the fence.
If the dumpster where it is now works, I think adding one more spot there, it would work better than possibly somewhat could, maybe not, might back up traffic onto Second Ave. There's a possibility and, and I would highly doubt the planning board in two thousand and six would have approved the dumpsters over there. I mean, if there's a chance that it could possibly back up and cause congestion when there's someone coming in, going out and like uh Mrs. McKnight said, there's three options to go which way. One of them will be blocked by the nine and a half foot wide truck, according to Mr. Moskowitz. And, and um, I, I, I just think that, I don't know if anyone's even given a thought. I mean, I got the measurements, I did some research. And if the dumpster works where it is now, I don't know why we just don't add to it. I, I, I just don't understand it.
Because it's taking away parking spaces in the middle of a lot and
One spot.
Well, it may be two, which, you know, parking, the number of parking spaces is already a problem. And, and number two, the way, the, the way I look at the map, when the truck is there to empty the dumpster, which could be in the middle of the day, it's more likely to block the flow of traffic going in and out of the parking spaces than the current location where it is represented to us and it looks clear to me that that, that, that having that truck in front of lots uh three and four in, in uh the way that plan was presented is not going to block the flow of traffic. So I'm more, I am more comfortable with this cardboard dumpster. And you know, when we're talking about trash, remember, this is, this is supposed to be just for cardboard. So there's not gonna be the other kind of trash that's going into that, into that other dumpster. I'm more comfortable at it in, in the location that we're talking about here.
Well.
I don't know, you know, and I'm only one of five planning board members.
Right, well, I wanna enlighten you onto a few other things. The existing dumpster that's there is a, is an electric dumpster and it's covered. So nothing can blow out of it, okay? And the walls are ten and a half feet tall. And, and if I'm not mistaken, I read that you wanted the corral that was six feet high, enough to cover the existing dumpsters, the dumpsters, okay? Now, the dumpsters we're talking about, I've seen them many times get picked up at Panera Bread because of the banging. They get picked up and they're put over the cab of the truck and they're banged recklessly until they're empty. Okay, this isn't one that it pulls up and it takes it from the back with a winch. Okay, I, I'm not sure, Mr. Moskowitz described the wrong kind of dumpster there. I've been there when they come, okay? This pulls up and it has forks sticking out the front and it picks it up over, okay? It, it's, it's not the um, it's not the kind of dumpsters that have a cable, okay? That's the one that's in that bin right now. Um, oh, one more thing I'd like to, the Panera Bread, Mr. Moskowitz had claimed that the Panera Bread was open to ten or eleven in one of the past meetings and it isn't, it's open until nine o'clock. I just wanted to correct that. And, and also, the, the tree lines aren't as dense as Mr. Moskowitz thinks. They, you can clearly see the fence in daylight at the bottom of it, okay? I'd also like to say that there's not a chance the snow plowing or removal of snow from the site is in any special permit or anything, okay? That's not even thought of, okay?
I don't know when, whoa, 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 Mr. Negotian. When we do special permits, removal of snow is always something that we're concerned about in a parking lot such as this. I've been on the board now for years and I have every, every special permit that I've, I've considered that has to do with a commercial property, the snow removal has been, has been part of the special permit.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I apologize. I didn't know. I, I dealt with that and, and I never, I dealt with this whole scenario, you know? This particular parcel, um, they wanted, they, by right, they were supposed to be fifty feet away from the neighboring, the neighbors, the abutters. On that last plan that was shown, the houses were not on it, okay? The abutters, they were missing again. But this, this, there's eleven family bedrooms, ten feet off the lot line.
Mr. Negotian, Mr. Negotian, it's ten minutes late. We're already late for two other hearings. You're going off on topics that, that, that are, are not in front of us tonight. We have your letter.
Yeah.
And, and I really recommend that if you are concerned about these issues, I really would like you to take them up with the building commissioner and not in front of this board tonight. We are dealing purely with the cardboard dumpsters and its location and amending the special permit to allow for the addition of these cardboard dumpsters and moving them away from the fence to the neighbors.
I understand that completely, but you know, whenever your neighbor stretches his arm out to you and has some issues to deal with and they, they happen to be going for a, a special permit over something, you don't find that the time to be dealing with this stuff?
When we're, when we're dealing with an entire special permit, we do. Mr. Negotian, I really don't want to take any more time to discuss this. I have made my point. Please, if you have issues other than the cardboard dumpster, please present them to our building commissioner or call Ms. Newman and deal with Ms. Newman about them outside of this meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I get the message. Thank, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean, you have your hand raised.
Um, I was looking in the materials that we had before us last time and uh tonight, both on this and on the um application for the medical building. And I was looking for our existing special permit and I, I couldn't locate it in our materials. Because I agree with you, uh, Mr. Albert, that we always do require uh snow to be removed so that uh it doesn't take away from the parking spaces. But I don't recall that we typically set a time limit and say, snow, any, any snow removal operation uh must occur, say, between eight thirty AM and six PM. Um, I think it, there's probably nothing in our special permit that limits the time during which a snow removal operation can take place. And in a way, that makes sense because they wanna remove the snow before the next business day is maybe the thought. But I, I, I don't want to protect, to, to suggest to Mr. Negotian that uh he'll probably find the answer to his uh concern in our existing special permit.
But I think it's a legitimate concern where this property board is a residential neighborhood, that it's something that um, uh, with the proper procedure, I think if it's not in the special permit, I think it's a legitimate concern for this board to, to address in the future.
Snow removal is, snow removal is in the special permit and there's no time limitation because of the necessity of the situation.
Right.
Also, the dump, the town dump or the town recycling center where the snow gets hauled to only allows, I'm pretty confident only allows the haulers to come in at night.
That's a problem.
But I'm I'm open to discussion, but but it's clearly in the special permit.
Right, and and I'd like to deal with this between now and December.
Me too.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised among the attendees. I'm going to give it a few seconds, a few a few moments. If anybody else would like to make a comment or raise a question, please use the hand raise, raise hand button and we will call on you. Otherwise, uh, we can I'll I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on closing the hearing? Let's take a vote. Jean McKnight?
Yes.
Marty Jacobs?
Hi.
Natasha Espada?
Hi.
And Adam Block. I didn't hear you, Adam.
I'm sorry.
And uh, the chair votes aye. The meeting is closed. Um, it's already ten minutes of eight. Lee, I'm going to ask for your opinion. Should we discuss the decision or should we move on to the next hearing and discuss the the draft decisions after we've heard all the hearings?
We can do it that way, Paul. Maybe that's maybe that's more expeditious.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, I understand that you've already gotten your comments to the draft decision.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay.
So Mr. Albert, I I did want to I did want to suggest one thing if you um would wouldn't mind. The design review board reviewed all the all the applications that are going to come subsequently, which are the restaurant applications for their outdoor dining. And I know Chad Riley, I think from the DRB is present. Um, rather than have him stay for all the individual hearings, perhaps you could just give us a a brief report on what the design review board decided. Um, if that's if that's all right with you.
Um, sounds okay to me. Is do any of the other planning board members have any objection to that? Okay.
No, my my only question is, are we done with the Needham Gateway?
For tonight? We've closed the hearing. We do have a draft decision. So
what are we going to do about that?
We're gonna we're going to have all of our other hearings and then we'll take up the draft decisions, but um, you know, we're already running very very late on the on the hearings and especially we have a bylaw hearing scheduled to supposed to be eight o'clock. We'll be lucky to get it by eight thirty. Yes, Jean?
Well, the other uh hearings have to do with various parking lots and outdoor dining. They all have to do with the same thing. It doesn't make sense to include them all together. This one's just different. Uh, wouldn't we just quickly deal with it? I only suggest that.
Marty, do you want to deal with the draft decision now?
I'd favor that. You know, we've been talking about it. It's it's right in front of our minds. Let's go ahead and do it. Finish it up.
Yeah. And my only question is, there were there was a red line sent around by Alex Clea now this afternoon and then a little later, there was a whole set of documents sent around. Were both of the red lines that were sent this afternoon the same? Because I printed out the earlier one and didn't
Yes, I I took a look at it and it looked to me like they were exactly the same.
Okay, there was only one red line distributed.
But it was distributed.
Okay.
It was distributed twice. Okay. So uh, Mr. Riley, I think if you will wait for a few minutes, we're going to discuss the draft decision on the on the Panera Bread uh parking lot. So let's take a look at um at this and as I said, my comment on it was on the repair of the fence, which I believe was um section three point four. Fence that surrounded the prior location shall be uninstalled. The rear portion of the fence shall remain and be kept in good condition. And there was um there appear to be, I don't know if saying disrepair is the correct word, but we discussed some some deficiencies to the fence and specifically there I believe there was at least one area where the ground under the fence had been worn away so that so the trash was getting under the fence. Can we can we add to section three point four language to the effect that the that that the fence will be repaired or the or the uh uh, the 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 ground under the fence will be filled in such that there is there's there's no gaps between the bottom of the fence and the and the ground.
Uh, just a quick comment on that?
Sure.
I I agree with it as to that section of the fence, but don't you want that for the entire fencing across along that entire border?
Yes. And and I it says
Been behind the eleven houses?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I that's I'd like it.
I I think, yes, that entire fence should be should be repaired to the extent that it needs repair and any gaps need to be filled in under the fence.
So there need to be one more sentence um as Marty expressed about the fence behind the the houses?
I think that is, I think it's just one fence that runs from the rear portion front. The fence that surrounds the prior location of the dumpsters shall be uninstalled. The rear portion of the fence shall remain and be kept in good condition. We're talking about that fence that's the rear portion.
I think that refers, the the way I read that, it refers only to the the red section.
No, no, I'm I'm right. And I think I think we want it to cover the entire fence. So Lee, if you could word it, because I think it's just one fence that's along the entire property line there.
Yeah, but I do think if I do think it needs clarification because we have this plan that shows a red line on the fence that is going um to remain. And I want to make very clear, we're not talking only about that fence.
Right, it's the it's the entire fence along the property line with with the residences.
Just to be just to be clear, that red line that where that fence is that remains on their uh site plan, that fence kind of connects to a separate fence that's the perimeter of the residential section. So it's not all one fence. There are, there was a different fence, the red fence. Uh, sorry, the red fence comes down like this and then it connects to the neighboring fence and runs down the length of the homes. So uh
It's the entire fence line along the residential area.
And and the fence at the um at the rear of the building that connects to the neighboring fence. The adjacent fence. Do you want me to share my screen to show you more clearly?
Lee, do you think that language, you you think
I think I understand what you want to accomplish. You want a a condition that basically indicates that the fence has to be be repaired along that entire property line abutting the residential area.
Yes.
Such that such that no debris is able to actually uh blow underneath it.
Correct.
I think I think the concern is the debris coming in here.
But it also, yeah, but Adam, but I think it said also the ones behind the houses because it blows underneath the fence.
Even though the trees are there, it still blows. It's move it to at the last hearing.
Yep.
You want to repair it and maintain to maintain to to keep that situation.
Yes.
Repair. Yeah, because now it only says ma- maintain, I think.
What's that page three, four?
I believe that that was my only comment to the Does anybody else have any any comments to the draft decision?
No.
Just
No.
I have one quick question, though, regarding the three point five, the final plans and all of that. It says plans, but Adam asked about height or someone asked about height. So we just want to make sure that we understand the height of the fence that is being proposed as well when when the plans are um submitted.
So there is six feet.
So there is a distinction, I think if I understood correctly, between Mr. Negosian and forgive me for mispronouncing the name and uh Negosian and uh Mr. Moskowitz. One said I think six feet, the the owner said six feet and then Mr. Negosian said it was taller than that.
Yeah, it was ten feet.
I didn't
So we Then, well, then include, I'm looking at the picture of the existing dumpster area. That looks um that's tough. It looks to me like it's higher than six feet, but not quite ten feet.
But I think he was, I think he was going to use the height of the existing fence, the that that it was currently enclosing those dumpsters, which is six feet. He wasn't going to mirror what the enclosure that he had around the dumpsters that are located in the center of the parking lot.
I think though, I think what we do want is it to be the same height as what's um enclosing the other dumpster.
Yeah, but where this is for cardboard and the other dumpster is for much worse trash. Do we really need more than six feet?
Well, to my mind, the only reason you would do that is if you were really concerned about people throwing things in there other than the cardboard. Like
Because they could easily throw something over a six foot fence.
Yes, where it's not so easy to throw it over a ten foot fence. That's the issue, I think.
So do you think we should require it to be a ten foot fence?
I I know I I actually think a six foot fence fence is sufficient for the purposes here of the cardboard dumpster with the small dumpsters inside.
I do want to actually add another provision that 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 the enclosure is locked like we had required effectively at the last one, which was a clandestine enclosure. And that might help other people from coming going in and um illegally throwing their trash in. I'll go along with the six foot fence. I
Good. Is there any um, is there any ability to put a cover or a roof on this enclosure, not on the dumpsters themselves, but on the enclosure? Because then maybe we wouldn't have to worry about people throwing things in from above. I mean, I'm all in favor of the lock. I have no problem with that. But if there's if there's a way to put a a roof on this thing, maybe we don't have to worry about going up above six feet.
Marty, I think the thing with putting a roof is that it starts and I mean, then it causes an issue for stormwater management and other things.
Uh
I think.
You're probably right, because the first thing that I thought of was snow piling up on the roof.
I I I think the I guess that my question, and I don't remember, is how tall are these dumpsters? So is six feet okay or should it be eight feet, you know?
The dumpsters, those dumpsters, I don't think are taller than four feet, so.
Okay, then I'm okay with the six feet.
I thought Mike said there was six feet.
The fence was going to be six feet.
Right.
Both.
I don't think so.
The dumpsters are really that short? They're four feet?
Can you you know, can we ask Mike Moskowitz or or Rick? They'll know. But I thought we were told six feet.
I'm in I'm in favor of bringing Mike over to clarify. Mr. Chair, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am okay with that. Alex, can you do that? Is he still there? There's Mike. Mike, you need to unmute yourself.
How about that?
I'm there. So how tall how tall the dumpsters?
So the dumpster in the middle of the parking lot, the trash dumpster is I I I know, I I I just want to just is much higher than the cardboard dumpsters and they're they're that's the reason for the i- if that corral is ten feet high, that's the reason for the height of that corral, because that dumpster is 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 much taller. Um, so the existing corral, which um hid the dumpsters from view, which is six feet tall.
And the dumpsters themselves in that are going to go into this yellow area?
Yeah, they're about I don't know, three feet high. I I can, I can uh see if I can get you the exact measurement.
They're a little taller than a Smurf.
A Smurf, okay.
I know this was discussed at the last uh section of this hearing. Um, it's too bad the sketch that was provided to us didn't just include that information. It has the width and you know
But I apologize, but but
With some depth, not the height.
Yeah, we're we're using the same height that's in the current forbidden corral. And even if e- even if cardboard piled up a little bit in the dumpster again, which it shouldn't, it it still could not be seen from standing in front of web looking into the corral.
That's true. From my own visual inspection, that clandestine six foot fence that they had in that area was about two feet higher than the peak of the cardboard dumpsters.
Yeah.
And I say the peak because the lid on the on them was on an angle.
Could we just do this? Um, we refer to the um to exhibit eleven, which is plan showing the parking space proposed to contain the new cardboard dumpsters and their placement within the dumpster enclosure dated March twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. And um, that's what, you know, that that's the plan. It's the sketch plan. Says curb on top, parking space on bottom, three twenty-two, twenty-two. Could we just, could we just say uh, we want um a revised plan without having to come back to us at all? Just to indicate the height of the dumpsters on their revised plan. We often do that. There's some little thing that we just want to say we want the that plan revised. Could we do that, Lee?
Sure.
Easily?
Yeah, I can get you that. I can get you that first thing tomorrow morning. So I I'll get you the height of the carb, I just want to verify, get you the height of the cardboard dumpster. And and then the the height of the six, well, the six foot fence.
The enclosure is six feet. The the three dumpsters are all four feet or less?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what's to be clarified on that plan.
But I I I have a cut sheet on the dumpsters. I I just don't have it on my fingertips, but I I I I'll find it and send it to Lee first thing in the morning.
Okay. And Lee, if it's four feet or less, that's fine. You don't need to come back to us, but if it turns out that it's more than four feet, you need to advise the five of us.
So what would what would our decision play, set, say? I'm thinking it's time for a motion, you know.
I think the motion is um that the the decision
The decision.
Pages plus what we've discussed this evening.
Okay. Um
As we've discussed this
An amendment, you should be um
Oh, I think we need to uh need, we need to vote the
You need to, I think you need to vote the relief and then you need to accept the decision as dra- as drafted with the changes we discussed tonight.
Right, so the relief is uh in the middle of page four of the red line.
Page four of the red line was the first page. Okay.
Before the board voted five not going to grant.
Oh, there it is. Yes, of course.
I'm
Um, well, um I then I'll make a motion. I move that we grant uh one, an amendment to a major plot major site plan review, special permit issued by the planning Needham Planning Board on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and six amended August fifteenth, two thousand and six, December nineteen, two thousand and six, April one, two thousand and eight, November fifteen, two thousand eleven, March sixth, two thousand and twelve, July ten to two thousand and twelve, August thirteen, two thousand and twelve. And July twenty, two thousand and twenty-one under section seven point four of the Needham bylaw and two a special permit, two thousand and five dash oh seven, section four point two and three, a special permit amendment under sections five point one point one point five and five point one point one point six to waive strict adherence with the requirements of section five point one two and five point one three of the bylaw um, which is required parking. which is required parking and parking plan and design requirements respectively. Subject to, uh, the, the plan modifications, conditions and limitations in the decision.
Yeah.
Should I go on and say, and we approve?
No, that's a separate motion. Um, I just wanna add, um, because this was in the red line and I just wanna add this, where we have sections five point one point one point five and five point one point one point six. After five point one point one point six should be added the words of the bylaw.
Okay, yes. So.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll take the, I'll take the vote. Gene McKnight?
Aye.
Marty Jacobs?
Aye.
Natasha Espada?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The drafts person had it corrected, so five, nothing vote. Now a motion to accept the decision.
So before we go into that motion, we just wanna be clear that we're, you know, the language, uh, with respect to the dumpster, I guess at three, four, it sounds like that's resolved.
Yes.
And then I have not had a chance to review the subsequent decision, but Lee, uh, it sounds like you were able to incorporate my earlier comment about adjusting the, the parking relief from ninety-seven to ninety-six spaces.
Yes, I made it explicit in the conditions. It was covered in the findings, but I added it into the conditions in the actual vote to clarify it.
Okay. I do have one question about one point three of the decision, which reads the enclosures proposed to be comprised of the same PVC materials as previously approved for the fence that abuts the property behind the Highland Terrace parcels. What fence was previously approved?
The fence that runs along the property line behind all the houses.
Oh, I see. Not where the enclosure was.
Right.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And the plan modification and minor plan modification we spoke of would, would, would be a subparagraph A under two on page four, is that right? So we'd have an A and a B?
Yes, I'll, yes, we, we have the plan modi- we have, yes, we have, we have, we'll have two plan modifications. So I'll add the one in where that drawing gets revised to show the dumpster height and the fence height.
All right, and then the other change, which we discussed, had to do with the repair of the entire fence.
Along the peripheral and, and its maintenance to prevent any debris from blowing underneath it.
So I, I move that we approve of the decision as drafted, um, for a major project site plan special permit, amendment dated March twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-two, uh, with the changes, um, discussed at this, uh, hearing or at this meeting.
Second.
Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Yes.
I heard a second.
Yep, that's familiar.
All right, yep. Okay, any further discussion? We'll take the, we'll take the vote. Gene McKnight?
Aye.
Marty Jacobs?
Aye.
Natasha Espada?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, unanimous. Excellent, let's move on. So before we actually call for the particular hearings, uh, let's hear from Mr. Chad Riley of the Design Review Board with regard to, um, their findings today, their hearing today and, and their findings today on these, these three applications. Yes, I believe there are three applications, four applications. Thank you.
Um, broadly speaking, uh, each of the four was approved as submitted without any additional conditions or recommendations to approve, uh, as the Design Review Board is advisory to the Planning Board. There were really only two, uh, points of general conversation that were not sort of requirements that the Design Review Board would recommend. One was that while, um, Jersey barriers are, are required by the town, and I think have been provided by the town, the applicants were encouraged to consider doing some sort of decoration. Uh, I believe that there's the one coffee shop that has painted the barriers and that was, uh, referred to as an example of something they might consider, but it's not a requirement that the Design Review Board would recommend to be imposed. Um, the other one, which really was not in the control of the farmhouse or our pizzeria is, um, there are some dumpsters right near the dining area, um, which, you know, for smells and other reasons are not ideal. Our understanding is that those dumpsters, uh, belong to CVS and that the applicants had requested that CVS consider relocating the dumpsters, but CVS, um, did not, uh, consider that and, and, uh, has kept them where they are. So that really is not the applicant's issue, but it was just something that was part of the discussion. Otherwise, um, the Design Review Board found them to be, um, well-considered, well-executed applications. I think in particular where some, uh, were proposing some improvements and, and increased plantings and decoration from what had been done on a temporary basis, um, that was, uh, acknowledged and, and, um, as positive contribution. So, um, we moved through all four of them in about half an hour with, uh, unanimous approval for the applications.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your attention to this.
Um, he said four. What's the fourth? I see three.
I asked them to actually take a look at farmhouse, too. It wasn't on our agenda for tonight. We had done that earlier. I just want, wanted a final sign off from them, so they did off.
Okay.
So we farmhouses on our agenda.
Oh, farmhouse, excuse me, the pizza, pizzeria, I'm sorry.
Our pizzeria is not.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks, Chad. That's really. And then the James is on our agenda next week, but they were just kinda doing him in the clump, which we appreciate.
Okay, I'm looking for. Okay, so, looking at my agenda, we are now, it is now eight nineteen and we are getting to the seven fifteen hearing, um, an amendment to major project site plan special permit number twenty fifteen dash oh seven, Latin A group doing business as Latina Kitchen and Bar, the petitioner for property located at thirty Dedham Avenue, uh, request to permit up to twenty-four outdoor seats. And we have somebody, we have some people coming in. Antonio, I just have the first name Antonio. Hello, Antonio. Anybody else coming in on this, Alex?
No, I don't think so, Antonio. You don't have anyone else that I should move over, do you?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Great. Antonio, welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, so yes, uh, my name is Antonio Grisio. I'm the owner of Latina Kitchen and Bar. And, uh, we are looking to, um, approval again for our, uh, outdoor seating area, uh, which is located in the East Ment between the two buildings. My landlord and they own it at fifty that Avenue has agreed on, um, allow us to do the patio on the East Ment. And, um, so we're looking for ninety-nine seats total, uh, capacity. I mean, that included the indoor and the outdoor. When the patio season, I mean, for any reason, we don't have the patio open on a given day, we will have all ninety-nine seats indoor.
Okay. Anybody on the Planning Board have any questions or comments?
I have a very quick one. Antonio, on the application, um, which is really the select board's application form, it, it does a mention of whether it's gonna be alcohol service, and you answered yes, and then it asks to check one, one of two different statements, and you didn't check either one. The two options were, the expansion area must be either contiguous to the licensee's premise with a clear view of the area from inside the premises, which I know you can't comply with just because of the layout, or the licensee may commit to providing management personnel dedicated to the area, which is I, what I assume you're gonna choose. Have you, have you actually done that now?
Yes, absolutely. We usually have, you know, servers and bosses and our manager at all times in, during service at the patio.
Okay, and you checked that off on the, on the form?
I will do that. Yes. Now, I don't recall what I did right now, but I'll, I'll review that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I just, I just wanna clarify that, like farmhouse, which you're gonna hear next, I mean, the building inspector has issued an opinion for both these restaurants based upon their plumbing bathroom configurations currently on the site. The maximum number of seats that they can have on the property at, at, at any one time. So the maximum number of seats is ninety-nine. So that has to be divided up between indoor dining and outdoor dining. So if this applicant, for example, decided they only wanted to have outdoor dining during the outdoor dining season, um, they could have a split, you know, seventy-one inside and twenty-eight outside, and then go to the full ninety-nine inside during that off-season. But there needs to be those clear lines about what's gonna be operational during what times of the year. Um, it can't just be we're gonna have all the seats out, but we're only gonna have so many open up. That's not gonna satisfy the building inspector. So this is currently written, um, as it was originally proposed, uh, which was that he wanted to have the outdoor dining, I think, year-round. Um, so it's done with twenty-eight outdoor seats, the draft decision, and seventy-one interior seats. So if, I think we need some clarification.
This is twenty-eight.
Well, twenty-eight outside, right, and seventy-one inside for a total of ninety-nine.
The application just says twenty-nine. It doesn't say.
Right, I was gonna point that out. I think the twenty-nine on, on the application is a mistake, Adam, because there are other places throughout where it says twenty-eight. So I think that needs to be corrected on the application.
But in terms of, yes, but in terms, yes, you're right, there was that inconsistency, but the building inspector's opinion is, you know, ninety-eight, ninety-nine seats period. Right. Um, at, at any one time, so.
Yep, but the decision, the decision reflects twenty, twenty-eight seats. I think Antonio has stated tonight that it's gonna be twenty-eight seats outside. Total of ninety-nine seats, Antonio, s- stated that.
I, I, I think he, I, I guess my question for Antonio is you understand, Antonio, that you can only have seventy-one seats inside if you've got twenty-eight out? And so if there are months of the year when you're not gonna be using outdoor dining at all, and you, and you know that, you know, you might wanna think about, um, you know, during, I don't know, December through, through March, maybe you wanna have no outdoor dining and only, and ninety-nine seats inside. It's up to you. But this is currently written to give you seventy-one seats inside and twenty-eight outside year-round.
Exactly. Um, well, I might have to go with your suggestion. I would limit, uh, my, um, outdoor seating, just the patio season, that would April to the end of October or November. And then I would love to have my ninety-nine seats during the winter season. So we might need to, um, modify our, our draft, if that's possible.
Yes, I think that's possible. I just, that's what, that's what farmhouse has chosen to do, and I just wanted to make sure we understood what your, what your goal was.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that's smart.
Right, so your permit for the outdoor seating is only gonna be from April one to November thirty?
Correct. I'm, I'm totally fine with that.
Good, okay. And the final decision will, will reflect that. Um, let me, uh, read into the record, the communication that we have received on this, on this application. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of the emails between our building commissioner, David Roach, and, uh, and the petitioner and Lee Newman, but there are multiple emails discussing the number of seats. And, and, uh, the bottom line is just as we've described it, ninety-nine seats total. So that when the twenty-eight seats are outdoors, there are only seventy-one indoors. We also have, as I get through all of these emails, okay, we have, um, a letter from Thomas Rider, the acting town engineer, um, from, with the Public Works Department, letterhead dated March twenty-fourth. They have no general objection to the proposed plans. We have, um, okay, okay, we have an email from Tara Burridge. Uh, the Public Health Department conducted its review, um, for the proposal for Latina Kitchen and Bar Restaurant to utilize the driveway next to the building for seasonal outdoor dining to allow ten tables with twenty-eight seats. After looking over the application, we concur with the building department's comments and have no additional comments to share at this time. We have an email from Dennis Condon, our fire chief. Uh, we are okay with this. And lastly, we have an email, I believe this is lastly, yes, lastly, we have an email from John Schlittler, our police chief. The police department does not have an issue with this. And with that, are there any further comments or questions from the board? Yes, Adam?
A question from Marty.
Hmm, okay.
Marty, and some of the applications before you identified if there was an error, that might require, uh, the applicant to return back, and I think that related to the identification of the parties and their, and their, the name of the entity. I noticed in this application, when it gives the address at nine oh seven Massachusetts Ave, number two, and it says Cambridge, there's a misspelling of, of the town Cambridge. There is a G instead of a B. That's not significant enough to require a whole change in the application, right?
That doesn't disturb me.
Okay.
Does it bother you, Gene?
I know, it's just, it's on the application.
Yes.
No. Um, it's clear, it's Cambridge and would just make sure we, you know, our decision is, is correct.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but Marty.
Must they move their offices to Cambridge?
That doesn't bother me.
Good. Okay, let me see if there are any hands raised among the attendees. I do not, uh, one hand is raised. I have somebody named Joan, the hand raised. Alex, do you wanna bring Joan over, please?
So Joan, um, if you get prompted, um, you do have to say that you do wanna be a panelist.
Joan, are you being prompted?
I do believe her hand was up, I, I think before, um, this hearing started, so it might be a leftover, you know, maybe she's not at her computer.
All right, I'm going to have to move on, I think. All right, let's move on then.
What are we gonna do with the decision for this one?
I don't know that there, well. So I guess, since we can't find Joan, and there are no other hands raised, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Tucker.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none will take the vote. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The uh. The hearing is closed. Now, um. The this, we do have the draft decision. Um, and the. Does anybody have any comments or questions before we? Ask for a vote on the relief requested.
Um, uh. Lee, exhibit seven, do we need to specify those dates or we can do that subsequently? To providing the relief?
Uh, that's I I already added that. I already added in those dates. They came those those um additional. Um, pieces of information came in on the twenty fourth.
Okay, so you have that?
I have that. So I think the decision just needs to be voted in terms of its relief. And then they give you the authorization just to basically make the modifications necessary to make clear. That the outdoor dining is only from April first until November thirtieth. Um, and then outside that window, it goes back to ninety nine seats inside the facility.
So moved.
Second.
Well, I need to have somebody read the. Read the um.
Relief?
Relief and page four.
So I have I. If I have the right one. I have. Page, oh, I see. So is it I to I I that I moved to grant? An amendment to major site plan review special permit issued by the Needham Planning Board on October twenty seven, two thousand and fifteen as amended. May twenty three, two thousand and seventeen, transferred on May twenty one, two thousand and nineteen, under section seven point four of the Needham. Zoning by law and special permit two thousand and fifteen dash zero seven, section four point two. And two, a special permit under section five point one point one point six of the bylaw to waive strict adherence. With the requirements of section five point one point two required parking and section five point one point three off street parking requirements. Subject to, and with the benefit of the following uh plan modifications, conditions and limitations in our. Uh, uh, latest amendment to the decision.
Okay, any discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marty seconded. Any discussion? Jean?
Uh, if, yes, um, I just wanna make sure I understand, um, because the decision as drafted. It seems to call for uh the seventy one seats inside, twenty eight outside year round. But I heard that there's going to, it's going to be a change in the decision to make it clear that. It's up to the, it is it is the clarity to make it clear that it's up to the owner? And that uh the owner can decide on what month they want to switch, or it's going to be set forth. Um, for the months that will be outside and inside.
I think he's excited, and it's gonna be as set forth, April one through the end of November.
Okay, very good. Thank you for. There was there was a back and forth, a lot of emails that I found somewhat confusing, but the decision itself was very clear.
Okay, so we have a motion on the granting of the relief. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Uh, Adam Block.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, it's five to nothing. Now we need a motion to accept the decision. With the uh change of the number of seats being. Uh, twenty eight outdoors and seventy one indoors from. Um, April one to November thirty and ninety nine indoors from December one through March thirty one.
So moved. Second.
Um, any further discussion? I'll call the roll. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Tonya, we're all set. Thank you.
Thanks, Anton.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Put these papers aside. So. The next hearing. Originally scheduled for. Uh, seven thirty, it is now eight thirty eight. An amendment to major site plans, but special permit number two thousand seven dash oh four. Dora Tavel Sanchez, la's m- manager of each farmhouse LLC. Um, for the property located at nine seventy Great Plain Avenue regarding the request to permit up to. Fifty eight outdoor seats at the farmhouse restaurant. And.
I took a guess, I'm hoping this is the right person. Dora T. sounds right.
Dora T., yes. Dora, you need to unmute yourself.
Hello, hello.
Hello, hello.
Wow, you guys are on restaurant hours, twelve to eighteen hour days. You do this every night?
Uh, every meeting.
My gosh.
You wanna join?
Wow.
You have an open seat, but I think it's too late for you to to pull papers.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. Going back. We have two. No, we only have one. Yeah, um. I'm gonna reopen the hearing for the sole purpose on Latina Kitchen to have a motion to waive the reading of the notice.
I think we need a motion to reopen.
To reopen the hearing for the uh.
Sorry, Adam.
Okay, any discussion? Call the roll. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the hearing has been reopened. May I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the notice?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Mark, Anna Block.
Aye.
Their votes aye. Man, I have a motion to reclose the hearing.
So moved. Second, second.
Any discussion? Call the roll. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This is the first meeting I've had with, the pictures have not moved around on my screen.
Sorry, I didn't remind you there's. Did all that, okay.
Okay, so now, um, Dora, thank you for your patience. Um, we are now on the um, the farmhouse. Uh, amendment to the special permit. May I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the notice?
Alright, so moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Dora, thank you for waiting. You wanna describe what you are applying for tonight, please?
Yeah, and Lee, thank you so much for your help, and Alex, too. I remember you guys from two thousand and twelve. It's been a long time. You guys are amazing. Um. So we want to just continue with the patio that we had during COVID. Which Needham was so way ahead of other towns in terms of supporting and being. So generous, I mean, way ahead of my other restaurant in Natick, so thank you. Um. But we wanna have fifty eight seats in the rear of the restaurant. Um, we want to do like you were mentioning in the previous. Whatever you call the thing with Latina guy, um. We wanna have fifty eight seats, but we want the season to be from. April first until October thirtieth, not November thirtieth. And then we wanna have the seventy six seats inside during the patio season. Um. We want to just ha- we wanna put more money into it. We put a bunch of money into it, but we wanna put more money into it with more permanent. Planters and just make it be more like our kind of taste, our aesthetic.
And to be clear, you're going to have a total of a hundred and thirty four seats when there is outdoor seating. During those months, you're still gonna have seventy six inside, even while you have fifty eight outside.
Yeah, didn't the draft, Lee, I'd say one thirty five? Maybe it's one thirty four.
Seventy six and fifty eight is one thirty four.
Okay, whatever Lee says is right.
We usually adhere to that.
Whatever Lee says is right. I think it's one thirty four, fifty eight outside, seventy six inside, yep.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay. Yes, Jean.
With regard to the application, I'm um, I'm confused about what's being sought. Uh, it says. Total number of seats approved under existing special permit sixty four total. And then total number of seats existing inside one hundred.
Right.
How could only sixty four be approved under the existing special permit, but they actually have a hundred?
Well, the, or Lee, do you wanna? It was brought to my attention, the building person said with our bathroom capacity, we can only have a hundred and thirty. I thought he said a hundred and thirty five, but maybe it was a hundred and thirty four, but that's the first I heard of it.
Uh, so I just wanna understand where. At the same time, we're approving outdoor dining, we're also approving a a total increase in the number of permitted seats? Is that, is that correct?
Lee, you're muted.
Lee, you're muted.
Let me just look at, I think during 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 the um, outdoor dining season, we're approving a hundred and thirty four. Um, I think they're gonna have seventy six indoor and they're gonna have fifty eight outdoor. Um.
But but Lee's question is, what does the current special permit allow? I'm sorry, what Jean's point, yeah, question is, is what does the current special permit allow? Cause it appears from the application. That it only allows sixty four seats.
I'll have to pull it up off of, um. I thought. I thought it allowed. Let me just go to the conditions. I'll I'll put up off of Citrix. Can you move on to something else and I can? I think I I thought it allowed a hundred.
Um. I know, can I say something?
Yeah.
Um. I'm not quite sure.
I think it's a hundred and it's limited to forty during the lunch hour, Jean.
Yes, I had a question about that.
They had, they had a limit there. That restaurant, I think, was approved a hundred seats during um, under their base permit and they can only use and. But they were limited, I think, to forty during the lunch hour.
And we closed for lunch during COVID and we haven't reopened since.
And so what's happening now under under this permit is that during the outdoor dining season, they're gonna go up to. They're gonna go up to that higher number. They're gonna have, could because I guess their restaurant capacity or their bathroom capacity. Will let them accommodate a hundred and thirty four. So we're gonna let them go up to a hundred and thirty four seats during the outdoor dining season of which seventy six will be inside. I guess, or was it the fifty eight will be outside, and then outside of that season, they go back. To their base permit, which was the hundred inside. Limited during the lunch hour to forty, and that same lunch hour limit of of forty spaces on the indoor. In on the indoor space applies during the outdoor dining period on those seventy six spaces.
So.
Am I confused?
No, I'm not confused, but I don't think that the decision states this properly. So during the outdoor seating. Periodally.
Yes.
They're going to be allowed to have dur- during lunch hour, dur- during the lunch period. They're going to. But we're issuing a permit that allows you to be open for lunch.
Okay.
A limited number of seating. They're going to be allowed to have forty indoor seats. And have in addition to that. Fifty eight outdoor seats for a total of ninety eight seats during during lunch?
During lunch, and then outside of lunch, it goes up, they can use the full seventy six seats inside with the fifty eight.
Right, I didn't think that your decision was clear on that. It seemed to be that all that you were saying during lunch was forty indoor seats.
I I thought I said forty of the seventy six seats could be used.
Um, I'd have to.
It's under paragraph one point four, then again, I think it's again. This, it's in the findings under paragraph one point four. Um.
Yes, you you state that that they can use the forty of the seventy six seats, but you don't drop the other shoe and say. In addition to the fifty eight outdoor seats. That's the phrase that you need to add.
Oh, I see, under six, under three seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
But but I I'm going back to where Jean was coming from. I think what Jean was asking was. The the application now says. That the number of seats approved under the existing special permit is sixty four. And now, now you're saying it's gonna go to seventy six?
The original permit, it sounds like Marty, that the application is wrong and the original permit allows for a hundred seats. Indoors.
I'll open it up. The sixty four that you're referencing is not inside. That was during COVID. We had an application to say sixty four seats outside, but since then, for this process, we had our architect. Architect draw everything out and we came to only fifty eight seats. That's the patio outside. In two thousand and twelve, when we filled out all of this to make farmhouse alive. We needed to have a hundred seats to get all liquor licensed. I wouldn't have even had that many seats, but to get full liquor back then in two thousand and twelve, you had to have a hundred seats. And then because of the parking and traffic and other things that Village Fish had encountered. They said you need to only have forty seats available for lunch to offset all the traffic and parking issues, which we did.
So it's the application for outdoor seating that's wrong.
Correct. Where it says total number of seats approved under existing special permit. Dora had put sixty four, where it should, where she should have put a hundred.
No.
On that line. Yes, because the question. It doesn't say, the line does not say outdoors. The line says total number of seats approved under the existing special permit. We did not approve the sixty four seats outside. That was a special COVID relief.
Okay.
Not in front of us. We we, we didn't approve any outdoor seats during COVID. We need to, that was covered by by the state regulations.
Okay.
Okay.
It's, I can understand where the application is confusing.
Yeah, it is.
It is. The 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 application is confused.
But I think I have it now, okay.
Yep.
So fifty eight outside and.
Seventy six inside.
Seventy six inside, and that is. Um. From April one through October.
Right.
Thirty first, right.
And if Dora chooses to open for lunch, fifty eight can be used outdoors, but she's limited to forty indoors.
Got it.
During that time period.
Okay, I got it.
And from November one to to um, March thirty one, it's gonna be seventy six indoor seats. During dinner and forty indoor seats during lunch.
A hundred seats indoors.
Like, you're right, a hundred seats indoor.
It it, something was said about some change being needed to our conditions. Could 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 that be explained? I just wanna understand what we're gonna be voting on.
Yes, I think, Paul, you wanna do it, sorry?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the change, the change that I'm, um, when, when we get to the decision, I'll, cause I want to look and see if I have other notes. I was just commenting on one particular note, Jean. I don't know if I have other notes, so can that wait until? That's the decision.
Sure, I'll wait on that.
Okay. Um, I just want to read into the record, the correspondence that we got in addition to, again, multiple e- e- emails with David Roach regarding the number of seats and the, and the bathroom situation, which has been resolved. We also have an email from Dennis Condon, our fire chief. The fire department is okay with this proposal. We have an email from Tara Gurg. Um, with three, with three bullet points. Dora, have you seen this email and you understand Tara's points?
Um, I don't have it.
Do it then. Okay. So she writes, and, um, Lee, please make sure that Dora has a copy of this. So Tara Gurg of the, um, of our public health division says, uh, the public health division reviewed the request for farmhouse restaurant. Here are our comments. Bullet point number one, due to the fact that this restaurant currently has a hundred seats, according to our food permit records, and they are planning on permanently adding an additional sixty-four outdoor seats, this will bump them up to a higher annual food, food permit fee. Here is our current fee list, and she gives a website. So they will be bumped up to, up to more than a hundred and fifty seats. So at a hundred and thirty-four seats, please make sure that you're paying the appropriate fee to the, to the public health division. That's, that, that's basically what that says. Bullet point number two, they must continue to maintain the exterior area in a clean and sanitary condition as not to attract the risk of pets. They must also continue to maintain clean and sanitary dumpsters, both trash and recycling and compost areas, and maintain their routine pickup service schedules and increase those schedules if any overflow issues are observed. And the last bullet point, they must continue to have routine interior and exterior pest control service schedule and be willing to increase this pest service if any increase in pest issues arise. So those were the comments from Tara Gurg. Um, yes, Lee, I did not see any comments from the police chief or from the building department. And I noticed that, uh, you do not reference them in the decision.
Um, actually, we did not receive any comments from the police chief, that is correct. Um, we did receive comments today from the building, from, not the building department, but from the town engineer. I think that was the one you were talking about. And he had no, he had no comment or objection on the project. It, he just recommended that we make sure that the select board sign off on the license agreement or the easement agreement that exists across the property.
The easement agreement already exists across the property. Why do they?
Right, but that, that, that the.
Oh, they, they have the easement agreement.
They have the easement agreement, but they acknowledge the shoes.
Right. Is that a condition in our decision? That the, that the select board, I, you probably have it. But the select board, uh, I think you do have it.
Yes, under, under three-five.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the planning board? Seeing none, I'm going to, um,
So moved.
Look at, at the attendees.
I apologize.
See if anybody has a hand raised. I still see Joan with a hand raised. I don't know what happened to Joan. Alex, do you wanna? See if Joan is there?
Sure, I'm trying Joan again.
Yeah. I think she raised her hand and then left us.
Do we take this opportunity to adjourn for five minutes? For bathroom break?
Second that motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
It is now eight fifty-seven. We are returning until, uh, nine oh five.
Thank you.
Dora, sorry to keep you, but nature calls.
That's okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
So before we continue to bring everybody up to date with important matters, the Celtics are leading Toronto seventy-one to seventy in the third period, and Will Smith has apologized to Chris Rock.
Well, as well he should.
I am here, I'm just finishing my apple.
So let's continue, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Alex, are you there and all set?
Yes, both of those things.
Great, then we are back from recess. And so we were looking to see, and we still have just Joan with a hand raised, nobody else seems to have a hand raised, and we can't seem to find Joan. So if there's no further discussion, we'll have a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? I'll call the roll, Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
People moved around now, next is Adam Block.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, but the hearing is closed. So let's move on, oh, I didn't read into the record, very quickly, I'm just gonna read into, into the record. Oh, I did, I did, I did read the communication.
No, it's like you did.
Yes, I did, because we talked about Tara Gurgis' email. So let's discuss the hearing, the decision quickly. So I already gave my comment on the number of seats. My question on exhibit number nine, Lee, is whether we want to also mention emails with Dave Roach or not. I don't think we get it with Latina, so I guess we don't need to do that.
Do we want to mention what the design review board reported?
Did you have that in here, Lee?
I took the liberty of drafting that, I think I have, I think I have a finding that, yes, under one eleven.
Yes, the petitioner appeared before the design review board on March twenty-eighth and obtained approval for the project.
Right. There's no mention of the comments that Mr. Riley made, but that's okay, that's fine.
So I had my comment to three point seven.
You know, Paul, I can add your language, but I don't know if it's necessary, and let me just tell you why. The paragraph before that, under three six, I basically described the situation in its totality, both for the fall and the time when there's seating outside. And paragraph three seven was only, or that next paragraph that follows, was really only intended to describe the conditions that were going to apply during the noon hour on the indoor seating. I mean, I can still add what you asked me to add, but that was the reason why I structured it the way I did.
You're amending section three point two.
I'm ready, section three point one and three point two, so three point one.
Right, right, but the two separate paragraphs, you're amending two separate paragraphs from the original special permit.
Right.
Which should, which should stand on their own, when somebody reads them.
Okay, I'll add that in.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I didn't follow earlier what we're adding in.
Okay, in section, in section three point seven.
Yes.
The amendment to section three point two is going to say, "The petitioner shall limit the restaurant operation during the weekday lunchtime period, eleven AM to two thirty PM, to forty of the one hundred to forty seats indoors and fifty-eight seats outdoors of the one hundred seats allocated."
Okay, forty seats indoors, and...
Let me change that, it's going to be later, it's going to say to forty of the one hundred seats allocated for indoor table dining and fifty-eight seats for outdoor table dining from November one through March thirty-one.
No, that, that, that needs to happen, I think, in the next part where it's forty of the seventy-six.
You're right, you're, you're, you're right, because that's the right. Jean, let me start again.
Yes.
"The petitioner shall limit the restaurant operation during the weekday lunchtime period, eleven to two thirty, the forty of the one hundred seats allocated for indoor table dining from November one through March thirty-one, and the forty of the seventy-six allocated to indoor dining, indoor table dining, in addition to the fifty-eight for outdoor table dining from April one through October thirty-one."
Okay, all right, and this is to make that clear, okay.
To make it clear that, that they can have the fifty-eight seats outdoors during lunch.
Yes, okay. All right, so when we sign it, we'll see that, that one change.
That one change, did anybody else have any, have any changes to the, to the decision?
I do not.
Nope, okay, Adam, you, no, you're silenced, so with that, I need a motion for the requested relief, which is on page... Top of page five.
I move that we grant an amendment to a major site plan special review special permit number two thousand and seven dash zero four issued by the Needham Planning Board on May seven, two thousand and seven, transferred on November five, two thousand and twelve, further amended June four, two thousand and nineteen, under section seven point four of the Needham zoning bylaw and special permit two thousand and seven dash four, section four point two and two, a special permit under section five point one, point one point six of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with requirements of section five point one point two required parking and five point, and section five point one point three off-street parking requirement subject to and with the benefit of the following planned modifications, conditions and limitations as stated in the amendment to the decision dated March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Excellent.
Second.
A motion of second, we have any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll, Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, it's approved unanimously five to nothing. And now a motion on the decision with the one change.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
And Paul Alpert votes aye, it's unanimous five to nothing. Door, congratulations, thank you.
Yay! Thank you, guys, can't wait to cook and feed for you, have a good night.
I hope I can come on Friday, but I probably can't.
Come, just text me, nine one seven six one two four six eight oh. Whatever you want, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, next on our agenda, Town of Needham. This was originally scheduled for seven forty-five, it is now nine fourteen. An amendment to major project site plan special permit number twenty fifteen dash oh six, the Town of Needham, with regard to the property being the existing municipal parking lot at Chapel Street. We have Chris Heap here representing the Select Board, and Chris, you have two minutes.
I think that's all, I think that's all I will need, hello, everybody. So this is a request, as you said, to amend major project site plan special permit two thousand and fifteen oh six, which is the applicable permit for the Chapel Street Municipal Parking Lot. The request to amend is being made simply because that permit does not contemplate seasonal outdoor dining occurring within that parking lot. So we are just asking that that be amended generally to allow room for that use by others. With the understanding that any restaurant that wants to take advantage of that is going to need to come back before the board to seek a modification of its particular special permit. So you can, there will be a restaurant by restaurant review of anyone who wants to do it, this is just to cover our special permit, that is, the town's special permit to allow for the use generally. Happy to answer any questions, but that's about all for me, for the moment.
I only have one communication from Dennis Condon, our fire chief, saying the fire department is okay with this amendment.
Did I, did I move to waive the reading of the note?
I appreciate the motion, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't think of it earlier.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is Adam, okay, we're all here. Any discussion? Okay, the motion to waive the reading of the notice, Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Natasha Espada, you're back in front of Adam, Natasha.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, thank you, Marty, for remembering that. Okay, so we've had our, our presentation from Attorney Heap, which I believe he kept under two minutes, thank you. Jean, you have your hand raised.
Yes, during this COVID era, when we had kind of loosened our permitting, were there restaurants that abut this parking lot that were taking advantage of outdoor dining? I'm just trying to recall whether that was the case.
Yes, I think the James, the James was one of them that was taking advantage of it, and they're actually scheduled for a hearing on April fifth to make their situation permanent.
Mm-hmm. And the other restaurant, excuse me?
Bagel's Best has some outdoor seats in the parking lot.
Okay, and the other restaurant is... The Cook had, Cook did not, Ms. Virgino?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I was just wondering what we...
Cook does have outdoor seats.
In front.
They have in, both in the front and in the rear.
Oh, they do, okay. All right, thanks, I just wanted to find out if, you know, if there had been any problems with it over the summer. But apparently not.
Actually, Bagel's Best has the seats, they're still out there, and it's cold in the winter, but, but they're there.
They're allowing indoor dining now, I know, I've been there a couple of times.
Any further questions or discussion? Hey, let me check for the attendees.
I, I have just another, actually a comment, if you don't mind, about that parking lot in general. Something's been on my mind for a long time about that parking lot, not necessarily changing our decision here, but the signage at the entrance to the parking lot, I've always thought was really inadequate to inform the public that there is public parking back here. You know, if you're shopping or whatever. And, I don't know, I just want to put it out there that I think the town should take a look at that signage and see if it can't be improved.
Jean, I can actually speak to that specifically because the Council of Economic Advisers some time ago commented and raised this with the town that we did need parking signage, because as an example, and we have so much parking, and yet it's not always being taken advantage of because people aren't aware of it. Some are, but not all, so the Select Board, I think, took administrative action and acquired a number of signs. There are small blue signs, but I don't think that they're large enough to have the impact that businesses are actually looking for. So we'll probably make a, you know, a recommendation to the planning board to increase the size of those signs, and maybe to add a couple more with directional indication.
You're meaning the Select Board?
Yeah.
The Select Board you'd be communicating with rather than...
Correct, the CEA, you know, runs under the direction of the Select Board, so that's who will make that recommendation too.
Yeah, that's good, because I think people misunderstand that that lot is for commuters, train commuters, but it is partly, but it is certainly many spaces available to shoppers, okay, thank you.
I also just wanted to clarify on Bagel's Best and on Cook's, I mean, if they, if they, if they decide to make their seating permanent, that would be actually permitted through the Select Board, because that's on public property. We have jurisdiction over the James because that's going to be on private property.
Well, thanks for clarifying that.
Where is that laid out in the site plan?
On the property line, essentially. On the site plan, I mean, the spaces, there's a, the municipal lot is actually shown as parcel B. And then adjacent to that is private property, which has the five...
I have parcel eight.
Okay, I'm, thanks, my, my eyes aren't as good as yours on the size drawing I'm looking at. Looks like a B to me, okay, so it's, it's, you're right, it's parcel eight. That's the thirty-one thousand square foot lot, that's the municipal parking lot. And adjacent to that is the private lot, where the town had an easement for those five parking spaces.
And that's what that line is underneath of thirty-one thousand eight twenty-three square feet?
The line is over, is the boundary line of the property, it's the dimension, I can't read it, south. It's on the left side of the drawing, it's, it's basically showing you a rectangle, effectively. The line that says south seventy-seven degrees or...
If I, if I, can I share my screen for a second, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So can you...
So this is the property line here, can you see my cursor coming down here?
No, I can't see your cursor. Can you see mine, you want to give...
Yes, bring, bring it to the left, bring it to the left. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, that's the property line, right, no, go back. The line is going right up, straight up there, that's the property line, no, going north, there, that's the property line.
And everything...
The municipal lot is to your right, and then there's, then you, then you're on private property where there's parking for the buildings there.
So this, this is private property?
It's private property.
And this is a parking lot, right?
There's some parking there that was currently being used by the town, I mean, the, the parking spaces under, that, that you see in red there were being, were privately owned and were being publicly used.
Right.
It was, it was a deal that was done at the time, the dumpsters were consolidated on the municipal parking lot, so it's the private dumpsters were put on the municipal lot, and the town got the agreement to use those, I think, five parking spaces on the private property in exchange for that placement of the dumpsters. But I don't think that's really pertinent to what we're doing here, currently.
Right.
So I believe the James will be putting their, their outdoor seating where those five parking spaces are.
That's correct, on the private property.
And that, and that's why they'll be coming to us, because it's on private property.
Right.
And they'll also have to go to the Select Board because they have an agreement with the Select Board, so they'll, they'll need the Select Board's approval. Okay, any further questions or discussions from the board?
Just that I understand if we approve this, that that will mean the Select Board will be, will be offset and able to offer outdoor dining to restaurants that wish to use the public parking lot. And that's essentially what we're approving here.
Right.
Yep.
And the James will be able to use the easement lot, the easement spaces.
Right.
Mr. Chair, there is someone with their hand up on a Samsung phone, I think.
Samsung Dash Garden, it says. So...
Should I take them over?
Yes, please. You need to unmute yourself, whoever you are, and please identify yourself with your name and address.
Unmute, this is Lynn Claflin, I'm at two two nine Garden Street, directly across from the train tracks from the municipal lot that you're discussing. I have a couple of questions, one is, is the season going to be defined?
I believe the season in our bylaws is defined as April one to November thirty.
Okay. And then my other question is, will people be, I mean, will, will we be losing parking spaces over there due to this change? And where, where will they go?
Well, the answer, I, well, again, we, I can't speak for the Select Board and what they're going to allow, and Bagel's Best and Cook, they'll be dealing with the Select Board for their, for their permit to have the outdoor seating, and that will also be a public hearing in front of the Select Board. The James will be coming to us because their five spaces are on private property. But I would, I would guess that they'll be at the same locations that they had it last year. It's the same parking spaces that Bagel's Best is currently using and that Cook has been using. I mean, Cook seems to be moving, moving the tables and chairs back in at night, so I'm only there in the morning, so I don't, I don't see what spaces they're using.
I, I was under the impression that Cook is there kind of semi-permanently, they've got that...
Yeah, but still, I would, I would guess, and again, this is just a guess, that they're just going to be applying to have the same spaces be used again.
Okay, so I'm confused what this hearing is for then.
Okay, the hearing is because, under our current special permit with the town, for the municipal, for their using this land, the municipal parking lot for parking, we have all kinds of conditions for what they have to do in, in the parking lot, including things like landscaping. You know, it's, it's, it's a special permit. It does not include the ability to have outdoor seating for the restaurants that abut the parking lot. And so this is merely a technicality to add that condition to allow for the use of the parking lot for outdoor seating for the restaurants that abut the parking lot. They still have to go through our bylaw proceedings of getting permission of either the planning board or the Select Board, depending upon whether it's on private or public property in order to have those seats, but it allows the use of the parking lot.
Okay, so, so this is a kind of a two-step process where this allows them to apply to use those spaces, so it's not like the entire parking lot could at one point be taken over for all outdoor seating.
Correct. I mean, I suppose by the wording of it, they could, but that's not going to happen because we're just going to allow some seating that, you know, a little bit of seating that abuts the, the, the restaurants, and we still need to have parking.
Right, I, that was part of my concern was not, I thought that this was, so, never mind, I get it. Then the, the other thing is then written into this, are there quiet hours and that sort of thing, I mean, I, I heard you guys talking about the, the snow removal down on Second Street, and it's very loud when they do the parking lot at Needham Bank at two and three and four and five in the morning. So I, and Cook often goes, I hear the karaoke and loud noise until around eleven, sometimes it's even a little later. So I'm, I, you know, we used to have buildings across the street that protected us a little bit from the train and anything that was going on, on the other way, now it's wide open, I hear the dumpster emptying and everything else. So I'm just, that's another concern I have, is will there be some constraints on when quiet hour goes on, starts? Or is that a different process?
When, yeah, that's a different process, we're not dealing with that tonight. Each, each of the, I would, this is really a question for Lee Newman as to what special permits each of those businesses has and what kind of restrictions they have, although the town is responsible for the snow plowing. The karaoke, that's, that would be in the special permit for Cook.
Right, so that would be in front of the Select Board.
No, the special permit for Cook, I think, is, is in terms of their operations.
I think she's talking about outdoor activities.
Yes.
Outdoor noise, and that's all happening really under the governor's, you know, emergency order that allowed this outdoor dining to happen without, you know, meeting our regulatory framework.
Right, I'm just, I'm just asking, going forward, under this, does that, would that be addressed then under the Select Board when they go to apply for their permit?
Correct, absolutely.
Okay, and, and will we be notified of the, those hearings then also, the way we were about this? Okay, and, and will we be notified of the, those hearings then also, the way we were about this?
We would expect so.
Well, my understanding that the select board intends to provide public notification for parking that's done, for, for seating that's done on parking spaces. So yes.
Okay.
But you better be alert for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep your eyes open for the public notices, which, um, the Needham Time, we used to, w- w- we used to publish our public notices in the Needham Times, but the Needham Times is going to cease the paper publication. So those are being moved to the Hometown Weekly.
Okay.
So keep your eyes peeled in the Hometown Weekly for the, for, for the publication of public notices in, in case they don't actually send, send it to you in the mail.
Okay, do they post them at the library or anything else like that?
Could be posted at Town Hall, right?
At Town Hall. Um, well, I think you might want to reach out to the assistant in the towns, in the select board's office, Miles, um, who can let you know the schedule. He's managing the outdoor dining for the, uh, town manager's office.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I think it's a great idea to have outdoor dining, especially since COVID looks like it's going to be here permanently.
As long as they keep karaoke to a reasonable hour.
Well, especially in the summer when I have the windows open. We don't have air conditioning and I'm on the front of the house, so I get it full blast and they don't always sound in tune.
It's karaoke, what do you expect?
Well, it's hard when you get perfect pitch, you know?
And speaking of which, thank you for being, uh, you know, aware and being involved and, uh, engaging and coming out tonight.
I appreciate the opportunity.
And let me add, Lynn, that, um, I may have been a neighbor of yours at one time, um, um, eight years ago, we moved, moved away and sold our house at the corner of May and Garden Street.
Oh, yes.
I know very well, um, when you live across the street from a commercial district, the noises that, um, go along with that. And, you know, there's, you know, it's certainly, um, to raise these issues and see to what extent it is possible uh, to control such noise. For example, the time of day that, uh, dumpsters are issued is one thing that we try to control. And, uh, so I really understand your concern for sure, Lynn.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And I should connect with you at some point.
Certainly.
So, thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, you too. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. So I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion? Jean McKnight?
Hi.
Natasha Espada?
Hi.
Adam Block?
Hi.
Marty Jacobs?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Marty, you got moved. I need a motion to grant the relief requested, which is in the middle of page three.
I move that, uh.
Wait a minute, Paul, I don't think you read in the comments on this one.
I thought that I did. There was only, there was only one comment. It was from the fire chief.
Okay, all right.
I thought I did that at the beginning, and the fire department is okay with this amendment.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll move that we grant a major project site plan special permit amendment under section seven point four of the Needham zoning bylaw and a special permit under section five point one point one point six of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with the requirements of sections five point one point two required parking and five point one point three parking plan and design requirements subject to and with the benefit of the plan modifications, conditions and limitations set forth in the decision that is before us tonight.
Very good. We have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any, any discussion? We'll take the vote. Jean McKnight?
Hi.
Natasha Espada?
Sorry, I.
Adam Block, muted. Marty Jacobs?
Hi.
The chair votes aye, unanimous. Uh, the only comment that I have is in exhibit six, Lee, um, I, we don't have anything from Tara Gurge or from Tom Ryder.
I'll, I'll eliminate that, all those, um, references.
Any other comments on the decision?
I have a comment on the score, but not the decision.
Did the score change? Well, it must have been.
It's one oh one to one hundred for, uh, the Celtics over Toronto.
Oh, you know how much time is left?
Three minutes.
Wow. Maybe we should take a ten-minute break. No, only kidding. So do I have a motion on the, on approving the decision?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Take the roll. Jean McKnight?
Hi.
Natasha Espada?
Hi.
Adam Block?
Hi.
Marty Jacobs?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. That's approved.
Thank you very much.
Good. You're welcome. Thank you, Chris. Finally, our eight o'clock public hearing. It is now nine thirty-eight. With regard to the proposed zoning amendment to the zoning bylaw, the, to change the schedule of use regulations to allow for brew pubs and micro breweries. Adam has agreed to give a brief, um, explanation of the amendment that's in front of us, and then we will open it up to public discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, I'll share my screen.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. All right. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
So, um, in November of twenty twenty, I, our, uh, manager of, uh, economic development in the town had received a phone call from a gentleman who was interested in, um, potentially setting up, establishing a brewery of some kind in town and, and wanted to find out where he could cite one and based on the various uses and what size and so on. And that began a process of internal investigation. I, and ultimately, I think, uh, the building commissioner had said that, um, it wasn't really, he didn't think that it was allowed in our bylaws. And that began, uh, that continued this internal discussion about trying to make it more clear in our bylaws that this use is allowed and where and how. But I will note that I think Marty had pointed out that he and Jean were part of another zoning change elsewhere in the, in the bylaw, which I should have had, I think in the news table. On page nineteen of our most recent bylaws, which was a catch-all that effectively said if there was an analogous use, uh, that it would, it would be allowed. And yet, I think that although the intent Marty, you and Jean, uh, had, was a good intent, and yet the particulars and features of the, of this type of a use would be better to be spelled out more clearly in our bylaws to avoid that kind of internal and external, uh, misunderstanding about the uses. So ultimately, uh, a working group was struck up to, uh, you know, that Lee had guided us. Our, I, our economic development manager conducted a thorough review of various breweries and wealth fam and of the hundreds of breweries, uh, throughout Massachusetts. And, um, and we put together a, this proposal for a zoning change to make it more clear. And ultimately, what we're talking about is effectively two different types of breweries. One is a brew pub and the other is a micro brewery. Here, a brew pub is defined as an eat-in restaurant licensed to produce and sell malt beverages. The primary business is the preparation and sale of food. So here we're talking about a, a restaurant effectively, and its accessory business is the production of malt beverages, which would include beer, ales and so hard ciders. And it would be, uh, available for onsite consumption and for onsite sales for offsite consumption. So if you go and you have a burger, you happen to try a beer and you like it, you know, you could pick up a six-pack or a four-pack depending, uh, you know, on your, on your way out. Uh, and it should also probably be said, I think, Lee, it's true that you can come in off the street and you can also then just buy, you know, a four-pack as well as an example. But beer can only really be sold to other establishments at a maximum of forty percent of the capacity. So all of the beer that they produce on site only forty percent of it can be, uh, um, sold to other establishments. Uh, accessory, outdoor dining and live indoor entertainment is allowed only if such is permitted in the underlying zoning district. Now, the micro brewery definition is a facility that's licensed to produce and sell malt wine and hard cider for retail sale, for wholesale distribution, as well as for consumption on or off-site. The maximum capacity would be fifteen thousand barrels a year, which is less than if for some of the attendees here or some of the other planning board members, if they know the mighty squirrel. They produce, as an example, I think, uh, over eighteen thousand barrels a year. So this is smaller than, for instance, Mighty Squirrel. In this scenario, the primary business is the brewery. And the secondary business, the accessory business, is food. So to be clear, the brew pub is a restaurant that can manufacture and sell beer. And a micro brewery is a brewery business that can, um, you know, that can also sell food. So you can eat and consume food, uh, on site, or you can also pick up food to go. Potentially, um, the, uh, the tasting room would be a maximum of twenty-five percent of the total space of the facility. And they would be in a, they would be able to host events and, uh, offer factory tours. Again, here, as with the brew pub, live indoor entertainment is allowed, provided that it's permitted in the underlying zoning districts. So this is, uh, to give a little sense of where brew pubs in particular are permitted. And to be clear, brew pubs are only permitted by special permit. It's not a by right use. And the permitted districts for a brew pub include the business district, the Chestnut Street Business District, the Center Business District, Avery Square Business District, industrial districts. But just to be clear, with the industrial districts, it's only within a hundred and fifty feet of Arbor Street, which, uh, is effectively, I think it's across from, uh, TBS, if I'm not mistakenly, is that correct? In that area?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. So we've allowed brew pubs in, in the industrial district, but only within a hundred and fifty feet of Arbor Street.
Right.
So generally speaking, is that roughly in the area where, um, three squares is, let's say?
That's correct. That's the only, that's the only portion of the industrial di- district where it's enabled.
Thank you. It's also, uh, allowed by special permit in the New England Business District, uh, Highland Commercial one twenty-eight, mixed use one twenty-eight, and Highway Commercial one. And the micro brewery, again, this is only available by special permit. It's not available by right. And a micro brewery is a, uh, would be permitted under the zoning change in the New England Business Center, Highland, uh, Commercial one twenty-eight, mixed use one twenty-eight, Highway Commercial one, and the Industrial one district. The excluded districts, which is to say, brute, neither brew pubs nor micro breweries are permissible at all in the residential districts or in any of the institutional districts. And with that, I, uh, welcome any comments and questions.
Okay. So. Yes, Natasha?
I have, I have a question in general. Um, I was reading some of the letters that were written by the community, and one of the questions that I have is, is there a provision for how far away we are from any residential, um, residents or, or, or any residential area? Because some of these districts abut the residential area, so, um, just a question that I have.
So in the zoning, as it's presented right now, we do not have that restriction. So uh, I read that comment as well, and let's discuss it. Marty?
Well, I just, I just want to point out that all of these establishments will be subject to having to get a liquor license from the select board and from the A B C C.
And from the, and also from, uh, the federal, uh, ATF.
And from the federal ATF. So, um, so, for example, um, there was one comment that questioned about, um, space, uh, not just residential, but also from schools and playgrounds. And, um, the, these are all issues that really can be brought up and should be brought up at the select board hearings for the issuance of the liquor license. In the case of a school, the question didn't include churches, but there is a state statute, um, that, that, um, you cannot have a liquor license within five hundred feet of a school or a church unless the select board makes certain findings. So, um, when, when, when there is an application to the select board with a liquor license, I think that's, that's when neighbors who do not want to see the establishment in, in the particular location would have their opportunity to, um, to explain why it doesn't make sense to grant a liquor license for that establishment at that location.
And may I add that, um, in no location are these facilities to be allowed by right. They're all to be allowed by special permit so that at the time, you know, the planning board could certainly determine that a, a certain site is not appropriate for this type of use. Rather than setting complicated feet distant from any residential area. Just go site by site. Is the concept here.
And, and for further clarity, Jean, I think it's probably worth mentioning that any applicant that were to apply would identify all of the types of uses. So for instance, if, you know, I can understand a scenario where a resident across the street from one of the commercial districts may be concerned, like we just heard, if there was karaoke happening at one of these facilities. I think by, because it's a special permit, we'd be, you know, first of all, they would be required in their application to identify if they're going to provide any indoor entertainment. And that would be a very important consideration for, you know, um, you know, for the planning board. You know, in any kind of approval or any kind of mitigation, especially if it's, you know, if it's a site that's, you know, that close to a residential district.
Right. So people who might object to a particular application. So people who might object to a particular application really get two bites at the apple. To object, one in front of the planning board for the special permit. And one in front of the select board. For the liquor license.
That's right.
I think with all that as introduction, this is a public hearing.
Right.
Right.
To the participants.
Yes.
So I see two hands raised. So let's bring in the first one, Thomas Harkins. Third hand was just raised, but. So Alex, if you would bring Tom Harkins over. Tom, you need to unmute yourself. And if you're. Able to turn on your video, it would be appreciated. Please name and address.
Chairman, before we hear from, uh, Tom. Do we need a motion to waive the public notice?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Jean McKnight?
Hi.
By the way, this is a motion to waive the reading of the public notice. Adam Block?
Sorry. Misspoke.
Marty Jacobs?
Hi.
Natasha Spada?
Hi.
And the chair votes, I. Tom, you're still muted. And you unmute yourself. Alex, can you see if he needs any assistance?
Um, the only thing I can do is ask him to unmute, um, which will prompt him to, which I've been doing.
What if we kept him while he's trying to figure out his audio and then maybe we can bring the next?
Now, bring over. Louis's note ten. Is what's listed as the. Oh, there's Tom.
Yes.
Go first.
Okay.
Name and address, please, Tom.
Thomas Harkins, twenty four Main Street, Needham, Massachusetts. According to Massachusetts Brewers Guild, there are two hundred and fourteen commercial breweries in Massachusetts. And a hundred and eighty two have taprooms. Another thirty are expected to open in twenty twenty two. Another thirty, yes. For several years, I have been advocating for a brewery in Needham. I am pleased with the planning boards. Uh, for addressing this issue. I think the plan zoning article allows for reasonable regulation. And the special permit provision allows the town to address any concerns people may have. Having been to over sixty breweries in the Commonwealth. I recognize that most of them. Are good neighbors. And have been positive additions to their communities. Of the three hundred and fifty one cities and towns. In Massachusetts, Needham is one of the most populous that does not have an, uh. A brewery or a brew pub. I encourage the planning board to clearly and strongly. The importance of this zoning article. I, uh. Uh, I'm very active in helping support it. And I hope you are too. One last thing to be picky. Uh, in the amount of gallons in a barrel. It is written thirty. With a number thirty one. In parentheses. So let's get that out before we get, get done down meeting. And takes another twenty minutes to get done. And to be fair, uh. And to be fairly picky again, the amount of gallons. In a barrel is thirty one point five. And, uh, so, uh, good luck to you. And I'll leave you with one last thing. Uh, dealing with, uh. Microbreweries. Uh, food, food trucks. Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Louis, it looks like it's, uh, Louis Wilson. Am I correct?
Correct. How are you?
Good. Name and address, please, Louis.
Lou Wolfson, twenty nine Samuel Road, Needham. Uh, first, I just want to thank Matt Marty for all his dedication. Um, and hard work all these years for the board. And wishing him all the best of luck in where he goes from here.
Thanks, appreciate that.
That's number one. Um, also, I believe Adam, um, in some of the zones that you mentioned. Uh, I believe you overlooked the industrial zone, um, on Crescent Road. Um, maybe I'm wrong, but, um, it is a zone that does allow. Um, everything that you mentioned, the retail establishments are allowed there. Entertainment is allowed there. Bottling is allowed there. Manufacturing is allowed there. Craft and consumer professionals are allowed there. Um, theaters, indoor moving, picture shows. Um, restaurants are allowed there with special permit. Um, you know, so I'm hoping that that will also be considered. Because it'd be a great, um, potential use for people that have approached us in the past, looking for space. In order to provide their craft.
I think that's, that's industrial, not industrial one, right?
That's correct.
It's right. The way, the way the zoning is prepared. The only area within any industrial district. Is within a hundred and fifty feet. Of, uh, Arbor Street. Which is to say.
Okay. And that's what I'm saying.
Yes, you're advocating to increase. The district, you know, the available area in the industrial districts in town.
Well, I believe it's a matter of, um, right to do the bottling and manufacturing that, that in these areas already. So I feel it's a disservice to the community and potential tenants. That necessarily aren't looking to have a, um, a restaurant or, or. Um, that nature, but maybe just want to have the craft practiced itself to the consumer. Um, or bottle less, um. Amount.
That's an interesting point.
May, may I respond to Mr. Wolfson? Um, yeah, with, with two things, um. The only industrial, and only part of our town's industrial districts, apart from industrial one, the separate district. As, um, this. Mr. Block indicated is the, uh, certain distance from Avery Street. Um. It, it would not be, um, Avery Street, what, excuse me, I'm saying.
Arbor Street.
Arbor Street, I'm saying the wrong street. Yeah, Arbor Street. Um. Uh, at this point, since, um. It hasn't been advertised that, uh, the town is proposing to allow, uh, m- microbreweries or, um. Or brew pubs in any other, uh, industrial area, industrially zoned area. I don't think we can, um. Change what we're proposing. In order to expand the area. Uh, that we're proposing to allow this use. Um. If this goes forward and seems to be working and then. Another year. Uh, we want to expand it for the Crescent Street area. I think, you know, then the, we could do it. We could. You know, let's put it before the voters again. So that's my point number one. Point number two is, I think it's a concern that, um. That Lou has raised, um, that. By specifying now the use. Microbreweries and brew pubs. The possibility of interpreting. Uh, the word bottling. Are, are the other words that he mentioned. Uh, as being broad enough to include. Brew pubs and microbrewery is that the doors would be closed on that. Um. That would not be a pro, uh, a legitimate interpretation of our bylaws. And we have very specifically said. What those uses are and where they're allowed. So.
I would like to raise the question. For Lee Newman. Um, I agree with Gene that we cannot. Change the proposed. Bylaw to present to town meeting. To, to expand what was noticed. We can restrict it, but we can't expand it. And what you're suggesting, Louis, would be an expansion. And so we cannot. Do that. But my question is, is that, is that an amendment that can be raised on the floor of town meeting? To include the Crescent Street area?
No, it would be outside the four corners of the article. It goes beyond the legal, the legal. The legal ad that was made.
Well, could I, I ask, um, I've never even heard about a, um. Committee. Study. And I just feel that, um, and everything that the planning has done and economics have done. Over the years, has pretty much excluded Crescent Road. And everything that you have all mentioned here. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you said that it was bottling, craft consumer. Um, the, um, restaurant. Everything. I mean, how could you just exclude an area? That's allowed, allowed use. You're taking, um, tax revenues out of the town? Taking potential businesses from coming into town?
Well, we're not excluding them from coming into town, Louis. We're excluding them from going into the district that you want to include. The whole idea is to allow them to come into town.
That, that's an allowed district. You're correct.
So. We hear what you're saying, Louis. This would have to be an amendment. If this passes to begin with. If this passes town meeting. Um, in order to include Crescent Road, it would have to require an amendment. And I, as a member of the planning board, would certainly be willing. To look at that. Uh, to bring, to bring that amendment to town meeting either in October or next year.
Uh, okay.
But, but, but I would have to, you know. We would do our due diligence and, you know. We'll put it on the table for you.
I, I appreciate it. I just hate, hate that it's always an overlooked area or not community. It is within a half mile of the train station as well. And, you know, people say they'd like it to be with, you know, an area that they go walk to the commuter rail. Um, all the other areas that you're talking about don't allow for that either that I'm aware of.
There is, there is also in Crescent and just south, uh. West of there. A fairly dense. Residential. Area, right?
There is in the Arbor Way as well. Arbor Road, there's a lot of condominiums in the area. Correct.
Lee, can you speak anymore to? Um, the selection of. Uh, parts of the industrial area and why this one was specifically singled out?
Well, I think, I think this one was singled out. I think the industrial district along Hillside Avenue was, um. Was, was, was excluded, um, because of the, their proximity to residential areas, um, along, I think, Hillside Avenue, the industrial district. Is sitting across the street from, um, an apartment district and, and single family residential development. I think in this case, the access to all this is right through, you know, residential neighborhood. So I think the idea was to have this kind of activity happen in areas that, um. Are more separated from Needham's residential development. And the, and the reason I think why the district was selected that was selected. Was because it was right on the spine. It was right on Highland Avenue. There was an existing restaurant that was currently operational there. Um, that people I think fight, felt might be appropriate for a conversion. Um, so I think that was part of the thought process at the time.
That sounds like spot zoning to me.
I don't think so, Louis. Well, I, I, you, you, you're talking to lawyers here. I don't think we're talking spot zoning here, Louis.
Well, but again, the, the aspect of tr- trucks going down, um, the area we're talking about already is happening. So it's no more traffic. But I appreciate Paul that you'll bring it up in front. And, um, so we'll, we'll go from there and I appreciate it, but I don't like being overlooked. Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thank you. Okay, next we have Ken G. Again, Ken, you need to, there you go. And, uh, may we have your name and address, please?
Absolutely. Uh, my name is Ken Gantz, twenty six Holmes Street in Needham. Um, first of all, I really appreciate everyone, uh, taking this up, uh, two hours past when it was initially supposed to be and, and, and. Uh, and still with the, uh, interest and vigor that, that, um, I. I was expecting at eight, but, um, I, I really appreciate, um, all the comments that have been read in. Um, I'm very much, uh, in favor of the, um. The initiative, um, and I appreciate the comments, uh, that just preceded me. I also. Appreciate your comments as a, as a body. Um, I think the, the intention here, so let me just, let me back up. I'm not only a, a resident, I'm hoping, um, to be, uh, to, to bring the first microbrewery to Needham. Um, I'm not the gentleman, uh, who, who reached out in November twenty twenty. Um, but, um, but I, I. I have a, an appreciation of craft beer that was sort of honed during the pandemic. Um, where if you take a, a geographic look around Massachusetts, you'll see that we're in a, in a brewery desert. Um, there's nothing anywhere, uh, uh, within a reasonable distance. And I think it's, it's something that we're sorely lacking for. Um. I, um, I also, so what I was gonna say is, I, I think that, that you guys are spot on in terms of, um. Uh, the, my, my personal opinion is that the, these should be as broad as possible. Um, and that, um, uh, you can judge on the merits of each individual application. Um, whether or not, um, keeping in mind that. You will have by that, that point have, uh, obtained a federal license, a state license, and then, uh, uh. Separately a poor license and, and come before you, um, for the specific site. Um, I, I am a little nervous, um, because I, I'm, I'm more interested in pursuing the microbrewery. Piece of this than the brew pub piece. Um. One of the reasons that Needham, Newton, Wellesley may not have a microbrewery, um, is because land is really expensive. Um, and so by. My, my feeling is by limiting the sides of the, the tasting room. Uh, to twenty five percent. Understanding that that's what maybe some other communities further out from Boston have done. Um, I'm a little nervous, uh, that, that the economics aren't going to. Be there for a microbrewery that where seventy five percent. Of the floor area needs to be devoted to. An industrial use. Um.
That's not entirely correct. Just to, just to be clear on that point, Ken. Um. Part, the other seventy five percent of space. Is available for. The production of beer. But also for food service. So we're baking into account multiple. You know, lines of business for a proprietor.
So, so, so I would love to get your interpretation or this body's interpretation of that because. My, my vision is an upscale brewery taproom. Um, and one in which would love to pursue even like, um. Well, it, it, let, let, let's stick, so, so, um, uh. There would definitely be food served. And so it just wouldn't be the primary business use. The primary business use. Would be producing and selling beer. Um, and so I guess I'm curious to hear what the definition of primary business. Would be if, is it, is it just purely gross sales? Um, because if that's, if that's the case, um, uh. If, if a food service area. Has. More beer sales than food sales, like, I, I guess, so i- if you're. I'm not thinking of having like a separate food service area and a separate tasting room. It would be beer production, um, and then there'd be. Uh, an area where you could. Part, partake in food. Or beer, um, or both. Um, a- a- and so I guess the question is. Does that, would that be limited to twenty five percent of the floor area?
Yes, the, in particular, the tap room. So if it was a ten thousand square foot facility. Up to twenty five percent of that facility could be used, a twenty five hundred square feet. You know, could be used as a tasting room.
Yeah, but I, I guess.
I should say taproom, I'm sorry. I should say taproom. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Paul.
Well, because you're talk, I thought your definition was for the twenty five percent was a tasting room.
A tap, so sorry, I apologize. A tasting room up to twenty five percent of the of the square footage. Uh, such facility may provide samples at no charge, limited in size, provided that such sampling is allowed under relevant local, state, and federal statutes, regulations, and licenses issued thereunder.
Right. So that's not that's not a a restaurant that is selling beer and food that's separate from a tasting room where you're giving free samples.
Well, so then so then to, I think, if I may, to Mr. Block's point, the final sentence is the facility may include as an accessory use, an eat-in or takeout restaurant, including outdoor dining, which may occupy more than half of the area of the facility. And live indoor entertainment, if otherwise permitted in the zoning district in which the microbrewery is located, if and as permitted by its license. Um, so two things about that. One, I think, I may be shooting myself in the foot here, but I think maybe that sentence should have read um uh which may occupy not more than half of the area of the facility. Um, because if if it's saying that it may occupy more than half of the area of the facility, I'm not sure why you even bother saying that. Um, but uh be that as it may, um, I guess I'm curious if a facility can be both um in eat-in or take-out restaurant and sell beer. Um, where do we draw the line in terms of, like, does there actually need to be like a divider? And and I'm and the reason I'm asking you this is because you are not step one in the process. I first have to go secure space, which by the way that to uh was it Miss uh Louis, uh to his point, there's no there include the Crescent Street area, don't include it, but there's there's no inventory of space out there um that would fit the bill for what I'm looking to do, because if there was, I'd be I'd I'd be in front of you tonight if that was possible. It's not because of this, but uh but I am uh the the there's um the question, I guess, is just um if if you need to have food um in order to let me back up. Uh, um, my, I guess my point was really just that that I first need to go find space. Then I need to go to the to the uh federal licensing authority for alcohol. Then I need to go to a state licensing authority for alcohol. Then I need to come see you and and also uh is it the select board to to ten, right, to attend the the uh the the liquor life, right? So so all those things need to happen before, and I I'm well into having signed a lease at this point. So I guess I'm just curious, because by the way, to your to your example, ten thousand square feet. Um, it it for if if I'm limited to twenty five hundred square foot of area where the public can actually be, that that's a huge brewery operation, se- seventy five hundred square feet for.
No, it's twenty five hundred square feet where you can have a tasting room.
So twenty five percent, right?
Right, right. So if you have a ten thousand square foot facility, you can have a tasting room that's twenty five hundred square feet. And then you can have a taproom with food, a restaurant type operation for additional space. And of course, you need your space for your for for your brewery.
But but so I guess that's my my question, because if I'm not interested in having an onsite kitchen, but either food trucks or maybe a pizza oven or something, the food available, but not the primary use, the so if there was no separate restaurant space, but food was always available in whatever capacity that is, like, I guess my question is, in order to satisfy the accessory use as an eat-in or take-out restaurant, that's not really what's happening, right? It's it's just space, call it a ta- tasting room, call it a taproom, call it a a restaurant. I'm not sure. That I guess that's my question is, what do we call that? If it's if it's an area where beer and food is served, is that a restaurant? Is that a tasting room?
So I understand, I understand the confusion. And uh and and it's good that you're bringing this up to get clarity. If I understand correctly, Lee, what we're saying is first, there are several things here. One, under no circumstances will we create an establishment that produces alcohol that does not uh, you know, uh provide for food as well. Which is to say, the town is not interested at this point in having bars. Okay, because that's what happens at a bar, right? Uh, you know, it's, you know, it's zero food and all alcohol. Or Diet Coke, I guess. And then um so that's the first point, and that's a function of, I think, policy for now. The second point is with a microbrewery as opposed to a brew pub, which I acknowledge is a different business model. The large majority of the operation is on the uh creation, the production of the beer and the and the sale of the beer itself. And the vast majority of that beer is going to be sold to other establishments of some kind, either directly or by wholesale. There's a small, there's a smaller area where there can be a tasting room. That tasting room may or may not have food. You can have food. Well, all that we're saying is that with food, you can have uh, you know, the food business can operate more than fifty percent of the business, if that's what a microbrewery decided to do. And that's uh that may include the taproom space, but it's not exclusive of it. So for instance, of the ten thousand square foot example, only twenty five percent of that, twenty five hundred square feet is the taproom.
No, not the taproom.
Sorry, a tasting room. I thank you for the clarification. I apologize.
What's the difference? You're gonna have to define these.
I I'm reading this because I'm looking at it, what we've drafted here. And I'm reading the difference, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, because I think you have more more experience in what into the drafting of this is that the tasting room is where you're giving free samples. People go in, they pour a small container, a very small container of beer. People taste it. They're not being charged for that small tasting. They may have cans or bottles on the counter that you can then buy because, oh, I like this beer. Let me buy a six pack. And they go ahead and they do that there, but you're not charging for them to consume the alcohol on the premises. Whereas a taproom, which is an accessory, and I think you need to have food in it, because that's what Needham wants to see, is where you are charging for a twelve ounce or a sixteen ounce beer or twenty ounce beer. Um, you're charging for a full container of beer with food. That's not a tasting room.
These definitions that you're proposing don't appear anywhere in this proposed bylaw.
Taproom and tasting room is not defined. You're right. Lee, do you want us, can you speak to what you meant uh with the tap with a tasting room?
I think the tasting room is what is just as Paul described it. That's how I envisioned it. It was this, it was a space where you went in to taste samples of the product that you may be interested in purchasing. And in Needham doesn't allow bars. Um, and so there is no provision here for a bar. So the only way that you can actually sell the alcohol that's produced is in the context of a restaurant, if for consumption on the site. So as I looked at the microbrewery, it was a facility where you were producing the product. It was an an area where you might have a ta- a tasting room where you could, you know, taste the product and decide if you want to purchase it. And then if you, then they would have the opportunity, if they wanted, to have a restaurant where they could actually serve food and the and sell the product.
So where does the taproom come into it?
There was no, there is no taproom. We Needham doesn't, Needham doesn't permit bars. So how do we have a taproom?
So none of that's clear from the definitions in our proposed bylaw. None of that.
I think.
The word taproom is not used in in our definition anywhere. The only thing that's used is tasting room.
I don't see tasting. Where do you see tasting room?
It's in the definition of microbrewery. Um, Marty.
It's not a defined, Marty is right. A tasting room is not a defined term.
Right, right. All it says is it can't exceed twenty five percent.
Yeah, but then it goes on to say any such facility may provide samples at no charge.
I think that was, I I thought that was a reference to the tasting room.
I thought it was too.
Yeah, it's not really clear. The connection, however, isn't clear.
So I think.
Two sentences. And I I I'd like to make a point in response to what a a question or concern Ken had. Uh, Ken, I failed to note your last name. I just refer to you by your first name, uh, forgive me. But um it it the definition of microbrewery does not require that there be a restaurant. It says, um which may include as an accessory use, preparation and or sale of food for on-premises consumption or for takeout. Then later in the definition, it says the facility may include as an accessory use, an eat-in or take-out restaurant, including outdoor dining. Um, I think the concept here is to be broad. Um, as was pointed out, Needham in its licensing does not currently license establishments that are just bars. Um, but it does seem as though the way we've defined microbrewery, if such establishments were allowed in the future per licensing, this definition of microbrewery would allow such an establishment because the restaurant is only something may have, it doesn't say, and must include.
Um, so my last name is Gantz, um, but G A N T Z. Um, uh, so so in response, thank you. First of all, um, the the this conversation has been uh uh helpful in a sense, in in one sense and and uh leads to other questions in another, but um uh I I think so. So my concern, uh, Ms. McKnight, is is that um I I absolutely think that food should be served at the at the establishment in my head. Um, uh, but but what I'm curious about is whether it serving, just serving food is in and of itself a rep principally in if if that use is a restaurant use. If if beer is sold and food is sold, does that make it a restaurant? Or does that make it a taproom? Or does that make it a tasting room? And that's where, because I need to know for planning purposes that I'll be able to do more than twenty five percent of the floor area to have the public congregate with food and beverage. Just that food may not be the principal use of that space. Indeed, I probably won't, I in again, in my head, I'm not seeking to have like a full group hub restaurant type of operation, but whether it's partnering with other local establishments and bringing their prepared, their food prepared offsite and having it available. Whether it's having food trucks, whether it's having a pizza oven that augments said prepared food or or food trucks. Um, there would certainly be food available. Um, but the question is, does that in and of itself make it uh an eat-in or take-out restaurant? Or does that?
No, that makes it an accessory use to your microbrewery. And I think and I think you're right. I think that where it says which may occupy more than half of the area. Lee, correct me if I'm wrong. I think I think Mr. Gantz is correct that that probably was meant to say which may which may not occupy more than half of the area.
No, excuse me. Um, I recall the our discussion on that point very clearly. There was some concern that how can we call something accessory when it might be more than fifty percent of the square footage of the facility? So we said, oh, okay. Well, we'll just say that it can be more than fifty percent. Um, but we're still calling it accessory.
Well, then Ken raises the question, when does a microbrewery become a brew pub? Or when does a brew pub become a microbrewery?
Well, and and if I may, the real question that I I would like answered, I'm not sure it's possible, but I would like to answer it, is the accessory use isn't serving food. The accessory use is ser- is being an eat-in or take-out restaurant. And so so does that in type, in order to be an eat-in or take-out restaurant, does it have to sell food predominantly? Or is the fact that food is available make it an accessory use to be able to sell beer with food available in a space open to the public?
The intent was the latter.
And one one thing I'll put a very minor, you know, we've got a couple of lawyers here, and I'm a retired lawyer. So some words have magic meaning. And we say um a um may include as an accessory use, preparation and or sale of food. So it could be preparation and sale of food. In other words, you prepare the food, you sell the food. Or it can be simply the sale of food. The food could be prepared elsewhere. Uh, you're simply selling it.
I I think you may be looking at the.
We go, we're addressing.
No, no, she's not.
Use of those words.
So the so this was written initially to provide a structure and context and to provide, and I think we're learning here that we need to define it a little bit more as Marty's identified as his view. And yet it's also to be broad enough so that way as an accessory use, you don't necessarily have to uh have a sandwich and a and a deep fryer, a grease trap, you know, and a pizza oven. You could bring that food in that's already prepared. And maybe you have an oven to warm it if it's going to be warm food. But effectively, you bring the food in that's prepared, and then you sell it to the public. And that and the and the ratio is totally up to you. It's market driven. You need clarity in planning to figure out what we, you know, we're talking about in terms of a taproom. And I think, you know, and for and for the consumption of food. So there's flexibility in the in the definition for you on the one hand. And I think it's true that we've discovered we do need to further define tasting room.
And I also think frankly, looking at it more broadly, I don't know why we're getting into these square footage limitations. Why do we want to do that?
And and to that point, this is always going to be subject to special permit review, right? So that that is my, the other, well, well, this is a secondary point, but the microbrewery definition um talks about wholesale distribution. It allows wholesale distribution. It doesn't say anything about direct distribution. Meanwhile, the the brew pub definition makes no mention of wholesale. Um, and in fact, I would posit that the under Massachusetts law, if you get a brewery, a farmer's brewery license, you're entitled to wholesale or direct distribution. But a brew pub actually doesn't entitle you to that. So I guess I'm curious why the microbrewery language doesn't mirror the brew pub language, which basically just says as long as you're doing it in accordance with state and federal statutes, then like um I I so in other words, um, I I I'm not sure if I'm if I'm interpreting it to be too uh such too narrow an interpretation to to read it as only allowing for wholesale distribution and therefore not direct distribution. Um, but if if that's not the intent, I'm not sure why the word wholesale needs to be in there, frankly.
It's a good comment. This is very constructive. If you uh do you have any other comments or questions?
I think I've, I think I've used my uh my 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 time here. I appreciate you guys all hearing me out.
Okay, very quickly, the definition of microbrewery includes retail sale for consumption on and off the premises or wholesale distribution. So a microbrewery can have both. So a microbrewery can have both.
So just to be clear, would I be entitled to sell kegs of beer to the James and to Blue on Highland?
Yes, under as a microbrewery, yes.
But not as a brewpub.
Because that, okay.
And the reason for that is because the brewpub principal business is the food business. So there are some, so we when when I think Jean and Lee and I and Amy were, you know, were looking at these things. And when the planning board was discussing it at an earlier point, we were looking at all kinds of different models. Some models that had no food whatsoever, and that's when we discovered that we needed to have some food. And like you, I've seen those establishments that have done the, you know, the food truck only scenario. And and yet this was the direction that was ultimately taken for now as a starting point. And we and I think the point was that, or the intention was that with a brewpub, you can come in, you have have a bite to try the beers. And then, you know, if you like your double IPA, you can pick it up and go. And you can also sell it to, you know, yeah, directly. As opposed to a wholesale operation, which would mean, for instance, potentially multiple trucks backing up and taking large loads of beer. And, you know, and running out because that kind of a use adds more complexity and may require additional mitigation. And was something that we wanted to avoid for those reasons. Lee, I think that's fairly accurate. Is that right?
I think that that's an accurate representation of our of our thought process.
I just want to be clear that the inverse is also true, which is if I have a microbrewery, can I sell to the James and to to Blue on Highland?
Yes.
Yes, that's wholesale, isn't it? Isn't that a wholesale sale?
Yes.
I want to make sure because I wouldn't be involving a wholesaler.
He's making a distinction. And there, I don't know, and we were, I think Amy is looking into this. With whether with respect to the liquor licensing laws at the municipal, state and federal level, if there is a distinction of the term wholesale, that would enable you to, you know, to be able to sell, you know, without a wholesaler, but you're still wholesaling your product. In other words, you're selling your beer at a wholesale price to, let's say, the James. You're not going through a separate third party in order to facilitate that sale. So I think that's part of the reason why we have the catchall language subject to state, federal and municipal regulations.
And Mister.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Jean.
Mister Gantz, if if this is something you're intending to do as your business, I'm sure you've looked into these the state regulations as well. And so did we look at them and read them. And they were completely unfamiliar to me. But I'd have to go back and look, but I thought there was some provision for allowing a certain percentage of the of beer produced at such a facility to be sold directly to another restaurant. But I'm not positive that it's not, it's not something that we would control in this bylaw. It's a matter of of state law and regulations with regard to the distribution of liquor that we have no control over.
Well, and that's all that I like, in in my head, that's all that I could ask is that this be interpreted as broadly as possible to allow for whatever is allowed. Because you're right, that there are differing, there's the the farmer's brewery, farmer's brewers license, there's a there's a pub brewers license, there's a manufacturer of malt liquor. There's different types of licenses and they all allow different types of 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 use and distribution. And so I'm trying to make sure that for one thing, if and when anything has ever changed at a state level, for example, during the the pandemic, they temporarily allowed for breweries to deliver products, sell and deliver products directly to your door. I know that well because I was ordering from Trillium. And they were delivering to my door. And so I want to make sure that I don't also then, if that were to be the case on an emergency basis or otherwise, I need to come before the planning board or the zoning board of appeals in order to get some zoning relief in addition to whatever the alcoholic license processes would also be.
As it currently states, you're entitled to sell up to forty percent of your capacity to another establishment.
Now, that's that's a brewpub.
That's what I'm saying. Under, I apologize, under the hour, I think. But yes, under a brewpub, that's precisely correct, that up to forty percent of the capacity could be sold. We didn't refer to it as wholesale, but it could be sold to another establishment. And that's what and that's what the intent was. It sounds to me likely we need to clarify some of these terms. I know Amy's already working on on one of them with respect to the wholesale distribution and the impact on the three different types of licenses that that Ken was referring to.
Well, I think I think the issue is that there are certain requirements that the state has about what these different entities can do as a function of how they're actually licensed. So if you have like a license, I think as a as a, if you're a brewer and you're when you're holding a license, I think as a manufacturer of wine and and malt beverages, I'm then you're authorized, I think, to manufacture and blend. But these licenses do not allow for self-distribution of of your product to retailers. You have to go through a wholesaler. So, you know, the state has regulations as a function of what license you hold with the state in terms of who you can sell and how they, you know, they don't allow you, for example, to be a self wholesale selling your product to a retail entity. So we can't control that.
But that but that, but I just want to be clear because that's true for brewpub. That is not the case for microbrewery. And that's the one that I'm focused on. Microbrewery, you absolutely can. And there are plenty of examples that that do. And and that's the camp I'm going to fall into.
Okay.
Well, I I think the lesson here from what we're learning and this interaction is very helpful is that we'll be we'll be discussing this language. And in the as part of that discussion on this planning board, we should take another look at those regulations. Make sure we're not unintentionally being stricter than we want to be.
And if I may, we've spent a lot of time with Mr. Gantz. There are more hands raised. We're now we now have five people who want to speak and it is ten forty. And we have.
I was trying to wrap that that up.
I really appreciate all the attention to this and and thank you all.
Your comments and if we may, let's move on to some other comments and try to get this done this week.
Thank you.
Alex, please bring Artie Crocker over.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it.
State your address, please, Artie.
Artie, number seventeen, Calas Street, Needham. And congratulations and as well to Marty for all the years you serve on the board. It's clearly an awful lot of work and you've done well for the town. So thank you for that. A couple of questions I I have is this. We talked about, started talking about neighborhoods, which are allowed, not allowed, and I heard mentioned about about talking about that. Specifically, one question I have right now is the Hillside, I'm sorry, the Highland Terrace neighborhood. The one near Panera Bread, I think it's the Highland Terrace is the road, the one near Panera Bread and all the and all those buildings going up the strip, the street there that are that are back up to Highland Terrace. Are those allowed to have brewpubs? That's one. Or, yeah, then the other one, one question is also outdoor, outdoor music. I would just to state, you know, just to state, I am really very much in favor of doing something with this. I think it's, I think they're going to be a fabulous, fabulous addition to the town. Absolutely fabulous addition. Just just a little clarification is needed to make sure we protect the neighborhoods. Is is, I mean, I'm a lover of music. Is outdoor music going to be allowed on these brewpubs? So that's it. Outdoor music and is is the other neighborhoods, I think, and I think it's Highland Terrace. Are those protected or are those going to fit into the special permit? And I I think there's a lot of value in special permits, but I think I think there's sometimes they're they're over overused. And and we need to, at the very beginning, put protection for certain neighborhoods and not allow even for the possibility of anything in the future to happen. Just put the protection in there now. So I'd like to get some, those are my couple of questions right now.
Lee, do you want to answer the question about whether these uses are allowed? Where the Panera Bread is, it seems to me.
Yes, it's allowed. It's allowed in that district. Both 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 a both a brewpub and a microbrewery are allowed in the height currently under this current proposal. It's allowed in the Highland Commercial one twenty eight district, which is where Panera Bread is.
But only by special permit.
Subject to the special permit process and getting a liquor license from the board of select them by the select board.
And we should add also, also allowed in the New England Business Center District. Because that district also abuts that neighborhood.
I understand the districts in their, you know, kind of a broad geographic area, certain specific districts. So they're not allowed in the Hillside Ave one where Central Automotive is because there are there are neighbors in that, you know, somewhere close proximity. But they are allowed in the neighborhoods literally that back up right to the Highland Terrace neighborhoods. I just want to make sure that's clear. That's what we're saying, correct?
Only by special permit, Artie.
I know, I can appreciate, I can appreciate. I appreciate the special permit. I do. But I do not believe they should ever be allowed right next to those neighborhoods. I think that's too close. Now, again, I appreciate the value of special permits. It gives a lot of flexibility. It also opens up a lot of holes for something to happen in the future. We don't want it to happen today. So if we don't have, if we don't want it to happen today, I think some considerations should be made. So it can't happen in the future, which means not even by special permit. How that happens, I'm not sure. But again, I think we, I think it should, it's a consideration that should be taken up now. Is I think they should be protected now. I I see no need to allow even the possibility of that. Then then the other question is. Anyway, sorry.
You use, you use the plural neighborhoods. You mentioned specifically Highland Terrace. Are there other neighborhoods other than Highland Terrace that you have in mind?
My my apology, my apology, well, my apologies. Yeah, that's certainly one neighborhood. You're correct. Yeah, that that neighborhood there, which is multiple streets in that area with a park, with a park inside of it, there's a park within that neighborhood. And I'm just, I'm drawing a distinction between a we're not allowing it in some areas because they're in neighborhoods very specifically because they're in but all of a sudden we are allowing it here when there's a neighborhood right and directly adjacent to it, a very, you know, that should be protected as well. And I don't think we should allow for the possibility.
But you want to exclude the Highlands.
I think.
You you want to exclude an area that's within a certain distance of the Highland Terrace neighborhood.
Yes, yes, but to to keep it a little bit more broad, I think there should be, I think there should be addressing not just that, but distance in general to houses because to to neighborhoods. Is we're already doing it again. That's why we're that.
Well.
That's why Hillside Ave is being taken out because of the proximity, proximity, excuse me. And so Highland Terrace should have the same value associated to that, that those that community and those neighbors.
That's a little difficult, Artie. Let's take the example of of Hillside Gardens, which abuts a residential district. Would you, would you allow for a brewpub at Hillside Gardens? Which is right on Great Plain Avenue, right next to the business district, but also next to a residential district. You want us to exclude that castle of land? Do you want us, you want us to exclude where? I mean, I don't, I don't know how far down from Hillside Gardens it is. But but the location where Needham House of Pizza is, is that too close to a residential district? That that should be, that that location, you know, that stretch of Great Plain Avenue needs to be excluded.
Well, what, I mean, what the just to be exactly, what the distance should be exactly, I'm not certain, but, you know, two hundred feet, three hundred feet, I honestly don't know exactly what the distance should be. What I, what I, what I do, what I do feel strongly about is that it's already been stated that one area was excluded because there was a neighborhood essentially across the street. And then here is a neighborhood that directly backs up to some businesses, which now could be allowed to have of that. So I appreciate you saying that. I I don't know, I don't know what the distance should be. I can't say if they're in the same or exactly what should be twenty five feet, which is fifty feet.
That's a point well taken. And there might be a way to carve out the Hillside Terrace District without being too restrictive in other areas of town.
I mean, I think one of the thing, I think I agree with with you, Mr. Chair, and it seems like, you know, there are, we want to be mindful of where these establishments could be. And, you know, we also note that we have multiple places in town that are already next to residential areas where you can consume alcohol or buy alcohol. So I think already you'd agree that there is a balance that we have to figure out here. It's a valid, it's a valid point. It's an excellent question. I think we do need to take a look at it. And I think we need to plot on a map, Lee, for instance, in these other districts, as an example, the one near Panera Bread. You know, and is there already an ability to buy alcohol? You know, in those areas. So I think we could do that mapping exercise and come up with some kind of a determination if and how much of a setback there ought to be between this type of an establishment and a residential neighborhood. It's really worth looking into.
When do we need to have a final version of this ready for town meeting?
No, your drop dead date is your next planning board meeting. But but by your next planning board meeting, this language has to be finalized. So the language with this would have to be finalized next Tuesday.
It's not going to happen. No, I don't think this, I don't, I I don't think this is ready. I don't think this is ready to go to town meeting.
I think I think.
That was my next point, Paul. I'm not sure if it's ready also, but I think I think we're all in favor of doing something. Is the is the thing. I think we're all in favor of it. But we're but we're, are we going to be rushing something to town? We're rushing to something to town meeting where they're looking, they're going to look at it and going, why the hell are you bringing to us this to us when it's clearly not ready? And then all of a sudden, people, you know, amendments on town floor, there's languages common missing here, there's language missing there. And and can it, can it be something that's waiting until it's? I'm not talking about vetting. Is it something that can be waited until the languages have been clearly straightened out? For for, I know we don't like to do planning board articles in the fall. I know there's been a big issue about that. But is there something that we can do to just wait a little longer? Just wait till then so we can straighten out the language.
I mean, my first position is I think we've identified a couple of very specific areas of improvement. And I'd like at least an opportunity to, you know, to see what we can do. I think that includes the comments that Artie's making about putting in a restriction by geography of around certain parts of town. And to clarify some other definitions. I think that if we, you know, work hard in the next week, we'd have an opportunity to improve the language. If that doesn't turn out to be the case, if we can't do it, it's understandable that we, you know, if it's not ready, then it's not ready. But I think that we still have a little bit of time to try and put this together.
Let's try.
And and just one other question is, I would, I would do it. I mean, I love music. I'd love outdoor music. Is outdoor, is outdoor music going to be allowed under this?
Well, this, I believe this stated that outdoor music is allowed if it's allowed in the underlying zoning.
That's actually indoor entertainment.
It's indoor entertainment.
Yes, so I, so Artie, if outdoor entertainment was available in this, you know, underlying district. Then, you know, that's a possibility.
You know, I, I'm just, I'm just, I just want to try to be all encompassing as, because we're, you know, you know, as Tom, as Tom. Harkins was saying, you know, it's, it's a wonderful thing to bring it to town. And so it's a wonderful thing to bring it to town. Can we make it as wonderful as it can be? As possible. I understand that underlying districts and the complication that all, that all produces as far as. Trying to allow multiple things to, you know, to help accommodate this one particular thing. I can appreciate that. But is, can we, what can we do to make it the best it can be? And if, and if it's needed to wait a little while longer, maybe that's the best way to do it. I'm not an expert in this, maybe amendments down the line, but it's always easier to get it right the first time. Than to do something now and then change it later on, fix, fix the faults or add it to, add it. And we're talking a few months down the line. Basically, I think we're just talking, you know, basically a few months later. Fit to finish at fall time.
I don't, I've got no problem with having zoning in the fall.
Same here.
Okay.
Not the planning board that doesn't want to do zoning in the fall, believe me.
Thanks for your support, Arty.
What's that?
Thanks for your support.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, I mean, it's, this, it's, I mean, really, to some degree, call it almost like a no brainer. It's just a matter of making sure that we protect. The people that don't always have a voice or have a lesser voice or have, have a lesser time in the future to have their voice. I just think that's. You know, that's where I'm following. And I think, I think we can do something. I think it's a great thing we can do. Just get it, just get it right. That's all. Not always the easiest thing in the world to do, but I appreciate you guys talking about it and how late you work.
Thank you, Arty. It's getting winter. It's five minutes eleven and, and, and I've got, uh. I've got three people who haven't spoken and two people who want to speak again. Uh, Elizabeth Caponia. Alex, will you bring Ms. Caponia over, please?
Um, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, may, may we have your name in.
My video, is my video camera on? Maybe not.
No, it's not.
Oh, at least you can hear me. Um, Elizabeth Caponia, uh, twenty-seven Highland Terrace. Uh, town meeting member precinct J. Um, I want to say thank you, thank you, Arty. Um, and I liked your guest, Ken, who wants to open up a, a micro brewery. Um, a great spot for that would be the place where Acapulco's used to be, right at the Route one twenty-eight exit. That's a big facility. It's not near any houses or homes, has plenty of parking, room for trucks, you name it. So, um, can you have a place there? I think if you're interested in this, this bill passes at town meeting. Um, so I'm calling from, I'm speaking from, from the standpoint of the residents. Who have been proposed all sorts of unfavorable things over the years, not only from Panera Plaza, but the, uh. The marijuana clinic that was supposed to go in the yogurt shop across the street from us. Uh, the only thing that saved us from that was the one thousand foot buffer that this type of establishment had. To um homes and to schools, to playgrounds, that kind of stuff. So what I feel is we really need a buffer. Um, otherwise, it's going to come at us over and over again. We have to fight. We have to fight in front of the select board, the planning board. Multiple meetings up until eleven o'clock at night. Um, I think it would just. It would just make it easier on everybody and also the people that want to set up such an establishment. But they know they don't have to go through a process of fighting for everything because the residents will fight back. So you would, you would eliminate uncertainty because as Ken says, he has to get all sorts of licenses, a lease, he has to get everything going. And then just to have residents fight back and be a battle. So it, it isn't feared to businesses who want to set up shop for micro breweries or pubs or to residents. So I'm very strongly in favor of, of a buffer to residences. And especially, it's not like there's just one house that's, you know, a hundred yards away. Especially densely populated areas like we are here on Highland Terrace and Riverside Street. And, uh, you know, it just, so that, that's my thought process. I mean, I, I do think it's a great idea to bring these establishments to Needham. Um, but we have to be careful, not always that it's imposed in the areas repeatedly. I mean, precinct J gets all sorts of nasty things thrown at it undesir, anything undesirable comes to precinct J. And we constantly are having to fight. It seems that I'm at every planning board meeting, every zoning board meeting. It just never stops.
Ms. Caponia, do you have a suggested buffer distance?
Well, we were talking amongst ourselves in the neighborhood. And I know you got another letter from another, uh, from another gentleman who was also a town meeting member, uh, uh, at the end of our street. And we've pretty much, and a lady who was a town meeting member also, Janice Epstein, we all felt what would be reasonable is five hundred feet.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's it. I know it's very late and other people want to speak, but thank you for listening to me. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your feedback. We appreciate it.
Okay.
I didn't thank Arty. I want to thank Arty for his feedback. Uh, Michelle Herman, you're next up. Alex, please bring this Herman over.
Hi, can you see me?
Hi, yes, we can. Welcome. Please.
Hi, sorry, wasn't ready for this meeting. I just found out about two, two hours ago. Uh, Michelle Herman, I live at thirty-three Bridge Street. Um, I, first of all, wanted to commend you all and thank you for having this meeting so late and that you are considering having micro breweries. Which I think would be tremendous, excellent for the town. I mean, what we've gone through in COVID and everything, I think more and more things to make people happy will. Be better for the town. Um, that said, I have to say my little piece. So I am not a drinker. I do not drink at all. But I am a cannabis consumer and I really would love that you would be able to somehow consider some kind of farm to table. Uh, kind of business that could be in, in Needham. I think it would be very helpful for everyone, educational for everyone. I think the, the tax money would be excellent and I don't think it would be as scary as everybody thinks it's going to be. Um, I'm not talking about having a straight retail store. That's something that I personally am not in favor of, but I do like these farm to table. Uh, establishments where you can consume and you can purchase and take home. And you can learn a little bit of something, not just actually just sit around and be at a quote unquote cannabis bar. So, and please use the word cannabis instead of marijuana. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Herman.
I just, not everybody drinks. Some of us want to consume other things. Just consider it for the future.
We appreciate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye now. Okay, Mr. Negotian, John Negotian, will you bring Mr. Negotian over, please, Alex? Hello, Mr. Negotian, welcome back. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address.
How you doing? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful. I don't know if you can see me, but.
No, that's okay. Name, name and address, please.
John Negosian, South Street. Um, twice in one night, I want to just say a few things. I, I, I really, I really would like you in the language that, everything to simplify it a little bit. Uh, uh, we have a neighborhood, the bedrooms are Highland Terrace, the bedrooms are ten feet off the property line. And there's, I, I think twenty, no, eleven, eleven families abutting that. I, I would like to address the entertainment. If, if there's places that have entertainment. Uh, the people generally walk outside and smoke. And when it's close to a neighborhood, that's not good. The smoke travels. I'd also like you to try to um find out what the state regulations are and whose would supersede what. We're, we're dealing with this with clinics right now. Who supersedes? That, does the state, state supersede the micro breweries and the um brew pubs?
They work in tandem, Mr. Negotian.
Yeah.
Somebody, somebody would have to meet the requirements of both the state requirements and the town's requirements.
Does the board know what the states are yet?
Well, the state requirements have nothing to do with zoning. They have to do with the operations of the, of the entities.
Well, we're trying to resell it to accept it, correct? And, and if we make a rule and then the state would have, if we zone it something, the state could overrule it.
Well, the state, the, the state can control, we can zone it so that they can have it in, in the, in the town and in the zone. And then the state would regulate how, how they have to operate, as with the select board.
Well, I, I just think that, that, I think that the, uh, the board should learn what the state regulations are. To fall under the guidelines. I don't, I'm not, I'm not really, I don't think, I'm not sure the board is well aware of what the state regulations are. And I think we should do homework there.
I, I want to say that we did. Um, I, you know, I could probably pull out the file if. For any other room back here. We, we looked at the state regulations to make sure that our framework made some sense. In the context of those regulations. Certainly, we don't control, have, you know, have any control about. Um, permitting that's done on the state level or what laws there are with regard to liquor warehouse and warehouse and distribution. But we made an effort to understand them. I don't want to leave the impression that we didn't pay any attention.
No, I'm not saying you didn't, but I think it's pretty, it was pretty vague. And, and the first kid that wants to open up his own. Micro brewery or whatever it is, he seemed to know more, an awful lot more than your average person. Okay. He seems to be very well versed in the micro brewery and the, the brew pubs, okay?
Mr. Negotian, may I?
Go ahead.
My recollection of, of the special permit, and Lee can correct me if I'm wrong. My recollection of the special permit for the Panera Bread area.
Yes.
Is that they're not allowed to have a restaurant other than Panera Bread.
You're a hundred percent right.
Brew pub is basically a restaurant. So that's, that's not allowed by their special permit right now. And, um, and I believe, now, I wasn't, I wasn't on the board when that permit was originally written. But I would imagine that that, that that is there because of neighborhood concerns that you just expressed about. People coming out of restaurants that serve alcohol. Um, so, you know, for that, for that particular plaza. I think that that's already contemplated that at least the brew pub would not be allowed. Now, a micro brewery is a totally different animal. Um, but a micro brewery, I think. You, you know, we're talking about something that's going to be producing up to fifteen thousand barrels a year. I don't think that what's, what's there is large enough for somebody to operate a micro brewery in that area. Um, and, 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 and we've had the comments from, from Artie Crocker and Ms. Caponia. Um, I think that this board is going to seriously consider um ways of. Of exempting the Highland Terrace area, an area from the Highland Terrace area. From, from allowing this. I know I'm, I'm personally in favor of trying to find a way to do that.
Agreed.
Yes, so, so that's two.
I appreciate that. I really do. And, and I would like to say you're, you're right about that. Uh, the only restaurant in the complex is, that it's allowed is the Panera Bread.
Right.
But, but they could go back for another special permit. They just did a year ago and, and it wasn't accepted. The planning board rejected. The restaurant aspect of it.
Right.
If I'm mistaken, correct.
Right, correct.
Um. I, I would say, I, I would also like to say is, I've done some research. Predominantly, the closest. Alcoholic serving facilities in the town are approximately two hundred and fifty feet. Away from residents. That's not done yet. I'm not done. That, now, Ramens. There's houses there, uh, that are near Ramens. But those are commercial properties that there's still houses on. If you understand what I'm saying. Do you get that?
Yeah, they're commercially zoned, you mean?
They're commercially zoned properties. They just still happen to have houses on them.
Some existing non-conforming houses.
Exactly. And, and I would have, I would probably say Blue on Highland. To the rear is the closest and I want to probably, I'm shooting at two hundred and fifty feet, yet I don't know. But, um. I, I just want to let, put my two cents worth in there. Okay, and, and I was aware, I was aware of exactly what you said. But I, unfortunately, that anybody can go up and try to change and, and that's still. Would maybe meet under a micro brewery. But, okay, you have a lot of people, uh, waiting and, uh. And I'd like to thank Martin for his, uh, time served. Okay, good luck with your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, don't let it go to your head. Louis's note ten.
Marty has one more meeting with us.
Yeah, what, you have one more meeting to let it go to your head and then after that.
I've only got one foot out the door, yeah.
Louis, I, I know you spoke before, but I'm going to ask you to repeat your name and address for us, please. And we're after eleven, so if you can keep it short since you already spoke, I'd appreciate it. You there, Lou? Can you unmute yourself?
Okay, there. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, you know, initially I was concerned, first of all, in favor of, um, you know, the brew pub, which is great. Um, Ken spoke very well about it. It'd be nice to have him come to the community as well. I was a bit concerned that, uh, notice was given prior to tonight's hearing. But in listening to everybody, it sounds like that they're going to need more time in order to really put this together going forward. I know that, um, there's talk about the Highland Terrace, which it sounds like, you know, that's not going to fly because of the neighborhood. But the Arbor, Crescent and Hillside, although they're all an industrial component, they also all have residential component as well. So I think that the neighbors will speak because of Quinta Marty and everyone else, that it's going to require a special permit wherever it goes. So, um, you know, I hope that they'll reconsider the other industry areas on Hillside and Crescent. Um, you know, prior to taking this thing to town meeting. That's all I have really to say.
Thank you, Louis. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ken G would like to speak again. Bring Ken G over. He seems to be the last one with a hand raised right now. So we're almost done. Unless somebody else comes forward. Hi, Ken, welcome back.
Hi again, folks. Um, I think I should first thank Mr. Negotian.
Name and address again, please, Ken.
Ken Gantz, twenty-six Home Street. Uh, I wanted to thank him for, uh, I feel, I feel a year older. I don't know about you all, but I feel a year older, uh, already this, this evening. But, uh, for, for calling a forty, forty-year-old, a kid, um, maybe makes sense in this context. But, um, anyway, uh, I have done my homework. I should, I should, I, I happen to be a, a, a real estate attorney. Um, I also happen to be interested in, uh, opening Needham's first micro brewery. So, so yes, I've done my, my homework. Um, I, I, I want to just put this out there that. It, it feels like you all have too. Um, and please, um, don't let my criticism. Or frankly, not criticism, but my, my questioning, my line of questioning to try to figure out, um, exactly what the interpretation of the language is. Um, please don't let that, please don't let perfection get in the way of. Please don't let that. Please don't let perfection get in the way of progress. I think that the intention behind this bylaw amendment is to be applauded. So I say this because as a resident, I would love to get the first microbrewery and brewpub separately open as a community amenity. I say it also, whether that whether that is or is not a part of my doing, I think we need that. And I think putting this off for another six months, putting it off for a year. And 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 I hear all the concerns. I will tell the the concerned residents that I certainly have no interest in opening a business anywhere where it's not going to be welcomed by the the community around me. It is hard enough to find space, commercial space. I really would would encourage you all to consider that each applicant is going to be in front of you in terms of a special permit request. I I say this because I understand the concerns of the folks in near the Panera development, and I understand why that doesn't make sense in that case. But I think a blanket rule is going to create more confusion, more chaos, more restrictiveness than may need to be the case in other areas. And so, anyway, I I say, please pass something. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised, so.
Mr. Chair, I move to close the hearing.
Thank you. I have a second.
Second.
Natasha seconded the motion. Any for any discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Let's take a vote. Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Natasha Espada.
Hi.
Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. A very productive and a very informative public hearing.
And I will say, Mr. Chair, I don't I don't want to preclude our ability to improve this in the next week.
No. I don't know what I forget what we have on our agenda for next week, but we certainly have this.
Right, but I I think we I think from what I've heard, we have something. We have some specific areas for improvements, and I'd like to make an effort to make some of those improvements and see what we can, you know, work towards and finalize for next week.
Sounds good. It's already eleven fifteen. We have a few more things on our agenda. Some things that I'm hoping maybe we can just postpone, but let me find my agenda here.
The next next item on our agenda.
Farmers Market, Needham Farmers Market, the decision.
Was there any comment on this decision that requires any further change or anything, Lee?
I have. I have a couple of questions or comments. Let me. I think they're very minor.
And I received a couple from Marty, but they're they're minor. I can tell you what they are.
And there's all these emails from from Mr. Friedman about about changes. Were they already made?
No, I have not. I have not addressed anything that he raised.
Oh, okay. I think the only issue that he had substantively here is that section three point five where you have the provision that says at least eighty percent of all vendors shall sell fresh produce and other food products. And Mr. Friedman had an issue with that and wanted to have kind of more general language. He has represented to us that there are going to be sixteen food vendors. So why don't we just say that? Just put the number sixteen there. Sixteen vendors shall sell fresh produce and other food products. We do that all the time. Somebody makes a representation that something's going to happen, and so we put it in as a condition, that that's what it's going to be. I would hope that Jeff wouldn't have a problem with that. The other question, the other question that I have is a three point one three. All trash and waste shall be confined to the site and shall be removed from the site promptly during breakdown. No trash or waste shall be left on the site at the end of the breakdown at six P M. But my recollection is that the breakout time is two hours from the close at three P M., which makes it five P M. Should six P M. should be changed to five P M. at section three point one three. That's it. Just those two. Those two changes.
I think Marty had a couple of technical changes, I think, in section one point one three and in section three point ten. I used the term Dedham Street, where it really should be. I think I use the term Dedham Street Lot, where it really should be Dedham Avenue Lot, so I can make the change.
Yep.
I think there. I think there was an exhibit that I failed to reference in section one point seven, which I can fix. And I think there was a place where I used. I think it was in section one point six. I used eleven P M. when it should have been eleven A M., and I can make that those changes.
Good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Block.
I move that we grant the requested major site plan review special permit under section seven point four of the bylaw and the requested special permit under section three point two point one of the bylaw for Farmers Market and the single residence B zoning district. And the requested special permit under section five point one point one point five of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with the off-street parking requirements of section five point one point two required parking and five point one point three of the bylaw with respect to off-street parking requirements. Subject to and with the benefit of the following planned modifications and conditions contained in the amended decision dated March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, as further amended by our deliberate by our discussion tonight.
Second that.
Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Natasha Espada.
Hi.
Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. That's unanimously voted. I need a motion to approve the decision with the changes that we've discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Natasha Espada.
Hi.
Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Chair, I'd like at this time to move into executive decision into.
I just need to dispose of quickly. The request for the A and R plan has been withdrawn.
It hasn't. It hasn't been withdrawn. It's being delayed.
It's being it right. He is. Well, it's been it's been withdrawn from tonight. He's going to come back with a revised A and R plan.
With that, Mr. Chair, I move that the planning board vote to convene an executive session for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to litigation being Needham Enterprises LLC versus the town of Needham Planning Board. Because the chair declares that such that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigation position and to allow our staff here, Alex and Lee of our town planner and assistant town planner to participate in the discussion in the discussion and to adjourn at the conclusion of the executive session without returning to open session.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
Yeah, that's fine. For discussion, I guess you heard a second, but just this discussion, I just want to mention, if we're not going to return to our agenda, should we just note there was some correspondence received that was in our package?
I'm trying to remember if there was additional correspondence.
From Jim Flanagan.
Yes, Jim Flanagan having to do with the housing working group.
Right. Thank you.
He wants. He asks if we could possibly have A D U's on this May town meeting. Of course, we can't at this point. It's too late.
Right. And we also got some correspondence regarding the letter going to the town clerk about the golf.
And there was also drawing. But there was also something from Susan Welby.
Yeah, the League of Women Voters, they want volunteers from our board to be at the.
We can. We can. We can take that up on the fifth. We've got plenty of time for that. And and lastly, we are foregoing until next time, the minutes and the report of the planning director. Okay. So with with that, we've had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, so the motion to go into executive session and to adjourn the meeting at the adjournment of the executive session. Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Natasha Espada.
Hi.
Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
Thank you. And note that we have a separate Zoom sign in for for the executive session, so please log out of here and log into the special Zoom for the executive session, and we'll see you all soon.
Thank you.
Leave.